Welcome, everyone, to our first council meeting of February. Hope everyone was nice and warm getting here. But thank you all for coming. It's nice to see everybody in the community come out. Before, oh, I'll do this in a little bit. I gotta read that at some stage. So we're gonna get going. Madam Clerk, would you care to read the adequate notice of compliance statement, please?
Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Calmerson.
Here.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Ms. Toad.
Here.
President McTiernan.
Present. All right. At this time, looking out into our audience, Mr. David Guida, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
You know it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session in hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channels 36 and 34 and Verizon Channels 30 and 33, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the minutes for regular enclosed session of January 21st, 2025? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to our reports section of our meeting. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to begin tonight by recognizing Black History Month. It's a time for us to honor the incredible achievements and contributions of the Black community, both locally and across the nation. In Summit, we remain committed to celebrating diversity in all that we do. Our Department of Community Services is organizing an event, so keep an eye out for the day and time so you can participate, likely February 18th, but not set in stone just yet. We're always focusing on the well-being of our community. In the last few weeks, we've put the spotlight on safety of our children in the digital world. Councilmember Jamel Boyer worked with Homeland Security to organize an excellent presentation at the middle school on how parents can protect their children from online predators. Following that, our local PTOs came together to host a screening of screenagers for parents, where I had the honor of speaking about my experience managing screen time at early ages, both as a physician and as a mom of four. This aligns with the Wait Until Eighth movement, which encourages parents to hold off on giving their children smartphones until the end of eighth grade. Our DCP is also partnering in that exciting endeavor by having phone-free events for kids at our rec center. It's been heartening to see so many of our families taking part in these conversations. And the more parents work together on this, the better chance we have at reducing social pressure to be immersed in the online world at an early age. In the spirit of supporting our students, I'm excited to announce the opening of the New Jersey League of Municipalities Essay Contest, which is available to all juniors and seniors residing in Summit, even those who attend private school in Summit. The essay prompt is really simple. It's an opportunity for you to brag about your hometown. Basically, what do you love about your hometown? Given the pride that we all feel about Summit, I'm sure that our students will come up with some terrific inspiration, and I think this is an easy prompt. The deadline is, to submit is March 7th, comes to my office. There will be three winners across the state of New Jersey. Each will receive a $1,000 scholarship, so there's some incentive. I will only select one winner, which goes to the state, and then the state, or the New Jersey League determines the top three. But you can't win it if you're not in it, Mike.
Gotta be another win.
And before I wrap up, I'd like to mention a special event that took place this past weekend, which I attended, which was the Sparkling Evening of Song at Twin Maples. Our community came together to showcase the incredible talent across the district of our students in performing arts. So that was a really great evening, and I want to thank Spark for sponsoring that event. It's a great fundraiser for them and a really great opportunity to see our kids in action. So thank you, everyone, for your continued commitment to making Summit a wonderful place to live, and I look forward to the exciting opportunities and the work ahead. Thanks.
Great, great report. Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, now we're on to our city administrator report. Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you, Council President. Exciting stuff. The February dates for the Summit Free Market are this Saturday, February 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then on Friday, February 28th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. You are required to have a Summit resident parking and disposal permit to access the transfer station to attend the events. And more information on the program and how to obtain a permit is available on the city website at cityofsummit.org/free market. Also, enrollment is now open for this year's Hometown Heroes Program. This is the eighth year of the program, which displays the banners that you see around town with the names, images, and dates of service of active military members and veterans. They're on the city streets from mid-May through mid-August. And information on application requirements and how to apply is available at cityofsummit.org/hometownheroes. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so for my council president report, I've been told I need to read this notice again, so I'm going to do that. I would like to announce a correction to the notice in the papers and mailings that the City of Summit's Affordable Housing Committee will hold a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to provide its annual status update of the city pursuant to the requirements of its settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center and Judgment of Compliance and Repose granted on January 22nd, 2019 by the Honorable Camille M. Kenny, J.S.C. This final annual status update will address all affordable housing activities that have occurred within the city in the past year. The Zoom meeting information is located on the notice for the meeting posted on the city's website. The notice mistakenly said Monday instead of Tuesday, so the meeting will be taking place on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. And all are welcome to Zoom in, okay? And please do if you're interested in the topic. Thank you. One other note for my council president's report. I'm really psyched I'm gonna be attending. Others should show. This Saturday, February 8th, at 10:00 a.m. at the library, we're gonna have a Lunar New Year Children's Art Show wrap-up. So pretty exciting. We think there'll be roughly 70 just incredible, amazing pieces of art that Summit children have presented, and there's gonna be a little speech, some awards, group photos, loads and loads of fun. So if you are around, come down to the library, 10:00 a.m. on Saturday. I will see you there. And that is it for my council president's report. All right. Let's move on. One of my favorite parts of the meeting every time is our historical minute. Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. On a side note, if anybody would like to see last year's art show winner, it is hanging on the wall outside of the council room, right to the left when you leave chambers. As for the historic minute, we have Bonnie Morrison tonight, who, I guess I don't want to say what the topic is, because it might ruin the surprise of her presentation, but thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Bonnie is on the Historic Preservation Committee, so it might be a little bit of a hint.
Okay, the subject is Summit and the Community Food Bank of New Jersey. A few brown ShopRite paper bags were at the side door of 45 Prospect Hill Avenue most days when Aaron and Anthony got home from school in 1975. The bags disappeared into the garage by dinner. From the garage, they found their way into the back of the family truckster, a wood-paneled Ford Country Squire station wagon. Sometimes that '70s classic made a pit stop at St. Teresa's Church on the way home from school. The kids in the backseat relished the opportunity to shop for candy at the Speedy Gonzales Mini-Market while Mrs. DiChiara ran into church and returned with even more brown bags full of canned vegetables, kidney beans, Campbell's soup, rice, and pasta. Aaron and Anthony's mom was always doting on her family, generously giving her kids and their friends attention and care. The brown bags outside the door seemed an insignificant detail in a busy family's household. Indeed, the neighborhood kids never knew what happened to all those bags after they helped load them into the station wagon. As it happens, when the wagon could hold no more bags, Mrs. DiChiara backed out of her garage at 45 Prospect Hill Avenue, turned left out the driveway, passed former Energy Secretary, this was during the oil rationing, and also the former Secretary of the Treasurer, William Simons' house, demolished in 2024, took another left turn under the train tracks on Springfield Avenue, and continued east to downtown Newark, where she pulled over by the sidewalk and handed out food to grateful folks. Her kindness squeezed in between cooking dinner, teaching CCD, driving her children to and from school, and helping with homework, launched the largest anti-hunger organization in New Jersey and became the source of 90 million meals every year. Today, the Community Food Bank of New Jersey's permanent home is the former Kraft Building with 285,000 square feet or 5,000 station wagons worth of warehouse space. Mrs. DiChiara's legacy, of course, is the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, which isn't going anywhere, thank goodness. Summit has a long history of volunteerism and service to others, and we follow her example to this day. But it is lamentable that the original location of this crucial group, a 1925 Tudor Revival style house that is a contributing structure within the North Side Historic District, will soon be no more. Another casualty of an "out with the old and in with the new" mentality, the Historic Preservation Commission hopes to slow. With the loss of that house goes another physical piece of Summit history, but we always will remember Mrs. DiChiara, her selflessness, and the great institution she founded.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Okay, we're gonna move to our presentation portion of our meeting, and we do have one today. For people who've been paying attention, there's been talk of a meeting work done on our tier garage that's been in our capital budget presentations, so that will be looked down, and eventually our capital budget will be approved, March, April, somewhere in there. And so we thought it was important that we have ONS associates come in and really tell us what is going on with our tier garage, so please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. City of Summit wanted ONS associates to look at the parking structure, the tier garage. So I just want to introduce our company.
Excuse me, just so people can hear you at home, yeah, that's perfect, yep.
Okay. So ONS Associates was founded in 1996, began as structural engineers, and expanded into other fields. Our office is located in, at 145 Main Street, Hackensack, that is the main office, and we have branches all over the country, eight branches. We have about 100 architects, engineers, and designers, MBE-certified. My name is Suchi Jaisena. I'm a professional engineer, also QPSI, that is Qualified Parking Structure Inspector. I'm one of the principals at ONS Associates, and I'm also the chief structural engineer. I have a master's degree in engineering, license in 17 states, 27 years of experience, and I'm with ONS since 2004. And I manage the parking garage division. So this is some couple of things that we do, parking, building and wheel up, MVP, architecture as well. I'm not gonna go into too much details, I just put it to include everything. And again, we have about 18 engineers, architects. We work for a lot of authorities, cities like Summit, hospitals, and other, a lot of organizations, parking garage managers. We do Local Law 126 for New York City, where they inspect and provide reports on the conditions of the garages. And we do design new garages, municipal healthcare, repairing them. So the tier garage, what we did is condition assessment, what we did is visual observation of the parking garage. In addition, we did something called a chain drag, where you drag the chain and we get a hollow sound in areas that have bad concrete. So it's the ACF certified method to identify. We also took photographic documentation, and we provided a report to the city with the cost estimate, which is I'm summarizing. So the tier garage is of five level, four supported levels, and one on great parking structure. It's about 45 years old. It's a cast-in-place concrete post-tension garage. That is, you place the, it has mild reinforcing, and it has cables that are pulled through, and then you pour the concrete, and then you pull the cables to strengthen the structure. So that kind of carries all the live load of the parking garage. It's one of the best systems in the industry, because the concrete is in tension on the top, which doesn't let any water go through easily. So you have a seven-inch-thick slab, about 110,000 square feet of it. Beams are placed about 18 feet on center, and some are, few of them are 27 feet at the edges. And they are also post-tensioned, and it has a cast-in-place parapet all around it. The traffic works in a single helix, so you go up, up and up, and it also has two stairs and one elevator. The lower level is asphalt-covered, it's about 24,000 square feet. So we observed overall fair-to-poor condition. Most of the poor condition is on the roof level of the garage. When you go down, it's in very good condition, but the roof level is in deteriorated condition. What we, we looked at the floor slabs, beams, columns, waterproofing drainage system, parapet, stairs, and on-grade asphalt. So I'm going by each section, like I said, oops. So, sorry about that. The post-tension slab, so what you do is, when you build it, you have mild reinforcing, you put the foamwork in, you lay the cable, and you, then you pour the concrete, and you pull the cables to tension it. Like I said, lower level side, fair condition, roof level is in poor condition. We observed spores and cracks. So on the roof level, we noticed that there are strips along the beam that is spored. This is because there is the mild reinforcing that is on top. Water has got in there, corroded. When the steel corrodes, it increases in volume and puts pressure on the concrete that is around it. And that, after a while, it pushes the concrete to a breaking point, and it has broken. So those spores are normally strips along the beam. And we, on the roof level, that's the strips along the beam, isolated damage on lower levels. So isolate, lower level side, very good condition. If you go down from the roof level, it's in very good condition. And we observed a couple of damaged tendons. So these tendons carry a lot of tension, and also it carries a lot of the load that is, so if you break one or two, you can live with it, but if it breaks many of them, then you gotta go and repair them. So, and so what our recommendations are, partial slap repairs on those strips along the beams. If you find any tendons, we'll repair them. Full-depth slap repairs in certain areas, and we are, I'll talk about this a little later, slope the ends of roof level. It's holding water, so I'll talk about it in the next section. So beams and columns, overall in good condition. We saw isolated spores and spore tendon pockets. So when you pull these cables, one end is, it's called the hard end, which is, it's fixed in there, and then you pull on the other end. So that end is buried inside the concrete, and the other end, because you tension it after, it's kind of open, and then you cover it with some, with a little bit of epoxy. So we found that a lot of these pockets are open, and our recommendations are patch repair the beams and the columns, and tendon pockets, you apply a coat, because it's very thin, even if you patch again with concrete, it just falls in another couple of years. So there is no reason, we can put some epoxy paint that covers it and protects it. The traffic barrier waterproofing system, so your garage is, has a full traffic barrier waterproofing system, so what it does is protects the concrete from water going in. If you look at to the side, the system consists of four layers. One is the primer, it's a very thin layer, and then you have a base coat, which is the real waterproofing system. It's 30 mils thick. 30 mils is .03 of an inch. And then you have the intermediate cores, which we put with sand, and then you have a top coat, which is 12 mils thick. So on your garage, the roof level is deteriorated. There's a lot of damage, and it's in very poor condition. And also, on the, on the lower levels, we see a lot of, around the turning areas, there is wearing off. So our recommendation is to replace the roof membrane completely, take it down, grind it down to the concrete, and put the full system. And in areas that we are repairing also, on the lower levels, we'll have to put the full system, and on the other areas, all the areas, we can put, if the base coat, the waterproofing layer is in good condition, we can put the two top layers and make it get the same warranty that we can, that you normally get. So that is our recommendation on the waterproofing. Stair towers, you have two stair towers. There, one is enclosed, other one is open, even though there's a roof on the top. The stairs we found to be in poor condition. They have a lot of issues with, it's improperly sloped, so the water is holding. We have, we found cracks and spores on the stairs. So we need to do extensive repairs on the landings, and we, there is also one expansion joint right next to the, where the stair connects to the garage, and we need to replace that. So our recommendation is to repair the concrete, rebuild the landings, install membrane, clean and paint the railings, and replace the expansion joint. The facade is a cast-in-place concrete, it's about 42 inches high, six-and-a-half inches thick, ripped exterior, generally in fair condition, isolated damage. Then, recommended repairs include repairing the concrete, isolated, this is a little bit, and patching the cracks. So we go to the drainage. So drainage is very important in a parking garage, because if you hold water, it goes down and damages the concrete. The drainage system was generally in fair condition. We found standing water on the roof level on the two ends. It's not sloped properly, and the water doesn't get out, and we found that that entire area has spored. So because this is a post-tension garage, we don't really want to do too much digging, and because if you crack, damage one of these cables, it's gonna be in really bad condition. We don't, whenever you are doing repairs, we have to scan and locate these tendons before you go and do any repairs. So our recommendation is to slope those areas to a point where we can get it to a drain. So we found, so that's one of the recommendations, and we found some damage, drains and piping so very isolated, we recommend replacing them. And any areas, when you, if you are doing a full-depth repair, in any area you have a drain, we recommend replacing those drains. So our recommendations are slope concrete on the roof ends to get the proper slope, replace damaged, repair area drains, and replace any piping. So in, just want to touch base on repairs. We do need to, the challenge is, again, those cables that are there, we need to make sure that they don't get damaged. If they get damaged, we have to find the two ends, pull it, and reattach it, and tension it, so it's a big process. Normally, we know that parking is a big problem everywhere, and we do repairs in sections at a time, and so maintaining that occupation is a big issue. Also, maintaining access, vehicles coming up and down, if you take one area, you have to somehow let these, the vehicles go up to the upper levels if you are doing work on the lower levels. And so adjacent rail line is also issue. If you want to do some work on the railway side, it's gonna be a big problem to access it, so we'll have to access from the inside of the garage, so we'll have to put some rigged system to access the parapet then. I know you cannot see this very much, the cost estimate, it's in your reports that we provided. We, I have summarized the summary sections. So going here, the cost estimate we provided is $2.91 million to do the repairs. This is an engineer's cost estimate that we generally provide. It's on the current market conditions, so we are, we don't, prices fluctuate, as you know, this is according to current market condition. This is also based on open shop label, so if you go prevailing wage or union wage, it becomes almost 1.5 to 2 times what you have, what we have. So if you go prevailing wage or union wage, it becomes almost one point five to two times what you have, what we have quoted. Actual prices will be provided once you drew the drawings and we, we put, set our drawings together, bid it out to contractors. We also include a ten percent of contingency funds for anything that we foreseeable, we, we don't see right now and we might have, as you know, these things happen. Engineering cost is not included in there. These are, I put a couple of pictures together on the conditions. As you can see, that is one of the underside damage, spores. Other one is a wall that is spalled. Yes, you cannot see it very well, but there are spores on those columns. And also there's, there's a cable that is hanging out. To the left is one of the ten, tension cables that is partially damaged. So that has only half the capacity. And to the right that you see is where one of those cables, tendons that are tightened, is, it has cut the cover out. So on these kind of conditions, what we will do is we'll just put some epoxy paint and cover it up. This is the water pounding on the, on the left, you have see water pounding on the edge of the roof level. To the right, you see that the membrane is worn out at the entrance. So in these areas, we'll pretty much, if it is that bad, we'll take the whole system out and put a new system on there. Stairs, you can see, it's all cracked up on that left side and also damage on the right side. On the top, you have this, the enclosure for the stairs, you need to clean it and paint it pretty much. Maybe even put a new, new enclosure. The last picture, you can see that the rail line is right there, so accessing it. With, especially with electric cables, it's very dangerous for people to go there. So we had to rig the system from inside and do any repair that we are going to do. Again, worn out membrane, you can see to the left, it's completely gone in there. To the right is an old patch that is already cracked. Thank you. Any questions I'll take, if you have any?
Yeah, I take questions from council first. You want council to ask some questions?
Yeah.
Jamal, you want to start?
First, thank you for your assessment. Thank you, Council President. I have like a hundred questions, but for the sake of time and for the sake of our residents listening to this, I'll just get to the most important, I believe. Does the garage pose an immediate danger to the public? And should any areas be closed off for safety reasons?
We didn't see any area that required closing. It, it's safe.
Are the deteriorating roof and stairways at risk of collapse or fall in debris?
We didn't see any debris that could fall, but there are some areas maybe we should knock it off. If there is a couple of spores.
Spores is mold?
Spores.
Spores, spores. Spalls?
Spores.
Okay, cracks, okay.
Yeah.
Any, any weight restrictions we should be concerned about right now?
No, we didn't see any structural damage. Cables are still in good condition, so you should be okay.
So the garage right now is safe for continued use while repairs are pending?
Yes.
And last question. What is the most urgent repairs needed and how soon must they be completed by?
So the roof level is the critical area. That's where the, this budget, half of that is going to the roof level really. So I would say that's where you need to start.
Yes, Councilwoman To.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple. When, when a garage begins to fail, how does it do it? Is it just sort of, it keeps going along in a straight line? Or does it limp, limp, limp and then crash?
Your, your garage is not in a, the most important thing when it comes to such a thing is the beams and the columns.
Okay.
And in your garage, it's in very good condition.
Okay.
It's the floor, floor slab that is really bad on the roof level. So your garage is not in any, any danger.
No pancaking in the near future?
No, no.
Thank you. Okay.
That's good to know.
Yes.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you for coming. It's very helpful. I think it's important for the community to understand, sometimes we go through a capital budget process and we, we say a garage needs to be fixed, but to actually see the actual problems with the garage is helpful. So one of the things I noticed was in your report, you mentioned that you had looked at the 2008 report by Boswell, but you weren't able to identify what repairs have been made from 2008 until 2024. Have you since then been able to look at what repairs that we have made in that garage?
We saw some patch repairs, like I think I showed one of them. See the picture, picture to the right? That's, that's that patch, that's one of the patches that have been done. Most probably they did some waterproofing work. Waterproofing is good for about five to ten, twelve years, depending on the conditions. Normally, on the roof level, it deteriorates a little bit faster because it's exposed to the sun, the lower levels. On the parking aisles, they tend to stay a lot, stay longer. And on the dry aisles, because of so many vehicles going on, it tends to wear off. And so you got to, like every five years at least, you got to look at it and replace that waterproofing membrane.
So how do, how do most municipalities handle this maintenance? Is it, you know, a yearly maintenance? Is it every two years or is it when something's broke? Like what, did we ever do any repairs or it just sounds like it was just patch repairs?
Yeah, generally it's patch repairs.
Okay.
Luckily, your garage is a very good system. I mean, the foundation is there for you to keep this garage. It's a post-tension garage. If you try to build it, right now, it would cost double the regular garages, double T garages that you put up.
Okay.
Because it, it's a very good system. So I highly recommend maintaining it. You put the waterproofing membrane on there, it doesn't let the water go down. That, that's what you need to do. You've got to maintain the sealants and everything and it will last for a long, long time.
Okay, just like three or four more questions then. Well, we have to paint over that waterproof material. I was reading an older report that we'd have to repaint almost everything due to that membrane or no?
So the mem, membrane is not a paint, it's a, it's a.
The actual spaces, like the parking spaces?
Oh, parking, parking, yes, you have to do that.
Okay, and then I guess the other question is, are, are the, are the stairs poured in place or are they metal?
Poured in place.
Okay, so that, so that's in your cost estimate is poured in place?
Yeah.
Okay, and then engineering costs are not included?
Not included.
What do you anticipate those to be?
So generally, it's about, for the design, it's about five percent of the cost. Yeah, and then we, we manage it. If you want us to manage it during the construction, we manage, manage that as well.
Okay, and then my last question, I guess, is, are there electrical conduits in the slabs or no?
No, the conduits are outside.
They're outside, okay.
Also, I wanted to add, if you want to, we, we haven't included anything like painting. The garage, only the front of your garage is painted, I believe. And also, if you want to paint the, the parapets, we can do that, but I haven't put any money for that. The other thing is the lighting. Lighting, you have right now fluorescent lighting. If you want to put new lighting systems with, what do you call it?
LED.
LED lighting, thank you. LED, LED, it will be very cost effective because it pays for itself in a few years. So if you want to change that, also we can incorporate that. I haven't put any money towards that.
Okay, great. I know you're known as one of the better parking garage consultants, so that's why we put you on the list last year. So I guess you'll work with Director Schreger and figure out, you know, what things were missing or what things were not added. So thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Councilman Palowski?
So the estimate that you have up there is two point nine million dollars.
Correct.
You said that's not based on the prevailing wage?
Correct.
So we have to pay the prevailing wage?
If, if you do have, I would say you have to multiply that by one point five.
So really, the number for this is like six to seven and a half million dollars?
No, no, one point five, so four, four and a half.
Good thing, good thing you came to council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
I think I heard you mention something about a warranty?
Yeah.
And what does that entail?
So generally, generally, the contractors give, once your work is complete, we ask for a five-year warranty. And the membrane manufacturer will also give you a five-year warranty. If you want, you can extend it to a ten-year warranty. They, they put a, another layer of, for a ten-year warranty. But what we recommend is get the five-year warranty and go after five years and put, put the other layer. That's a better choice than putting, getting the ten-year warranty right at the beginning.
Thank you.
Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you very much for your presentation. You know, sometimes a picture says a thousand words, right? So I, I've, I frequent the garage often and it's, in my mind, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of walking around thinking like, is this going to fall down anytime soon? So thank you for assuring me that it's not going to fall down anytime soon. However, I'm going to ask you for your engineering perspective and not your, your sales, salesperson inside of you. How long do you think this could continue without doing these improvements?
The lower levels are okay, but I wouldn't recommend upper level. Upper level has some issues. So you, if you start, let that go, then what happens is the problem spread downstairs. The water will start coming down, ruin the next level and next level and next level. So I would highly recommend doing the, at least the roof level right away.
Okay, and if we did, I, I mean, my opinion, if, if we're doing, I wouldn't want to piecemeal it. I would want to do it all together. That would be my, my opinion because I think once you start piecemealing things together and just, it just, it doesn't.
I mean, to your question, like I said, more than half the money is going to the roof level. So if, if you want to do it in phase one and phase two, maybe you want to do the roof level, touch that. That will stop the water coming down. That will stop the waterproofing and the deter, for the deterioration. So you can go ahead and wait a few years if you want for the lower level.
Okay, and with this type of project, if we, if we did a phase one and phase two, what's the typical timeframe in terms of completion? If, let's say, if, if we did just the roof, what you're, what you're recommending is the most important part versus doing it all together? What, what was, what is the timeframe for doing just the roof? What's most important now? And also, what's the timeframe for doing the entire project?
So the roof level, I would say you can do it four to six months. Depending on the contractor you hire, they, they have capabilities, you know. Some people have less, some people have more capacity to. So I would say four to six months, you can finish the roof level. And then you can, then next would be the stairs, I would say. Go repair the stairs. Stairs is a very small amount compared to the roof. So even if you want to do the stairs also with that, that might be a good idea.
Okay. While you're, I'm assuming you'd start from the top. While you're working in the, the top tier level of the garage, would we be able to use the parking spaces in the lower levels at the same time?
Not the level immediately below it because debris will be falling down and we, we would normally close it. But the levels below, you can.
Okay.
Also, we can use, like, you know, there is no point closing the entire level. We can close half at a time.
Gotcha, okay.
You know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Other comments?
One more question.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry, the elevator. Did I miss, you mentioned anything about that or is that not your, not your thing?
That's not mine, yes.
Thank you.
I had two questions. One was kind of a follow-up to Councilman Smallwood's. If perchance, we did decide, you know, four and a half million dollars is a big number, our cost. If we decided to split it, I would assume doing it in halves, the total project would cost more. Because you'd have to come back to start again. What would your estimate be if we did decide to do like a phase one, as you suggested, the roof? And then do the other half later? Would it be an extra ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent? What, just, and I know, I'm just, I'm putting it on your spot, just an estimate.
I would say it, it is less than ten percent.
Okay.
Because it's mostly the mobilization, demobilization kind of fees that you need to pay. Of course, you've got to keep in mind that prices might go up with the materials and labor. That's not included there, but otherwise, yeah.
Okay, and then secondly, you mentioned on the roof that there was these sloping issues. Is that just a wear and tear issue? Or was that something that the, our contractors who did this originally didn't do properly? I mean, my, my question goes to, do we have any ability to go talk to these people about how they might have installed our deck improperly, that we have water pooling and things like that?
The garage is about forty-five years old, so I don't think you have.
We wouldn't find them, is that what you're saying? Okay, just thought, I just thought I'd check.
But it does seem like original design issue actually, because normally floors don't go down like that, so it is original.
So there was a sloping issue to begin with, okay. And then I did have one more thought. When you showed particularly that first picture, the aerial, to me, that top roof cries out for solar panels. And, and I know, Councilman Smallwood, you've been on about this and such like that. If we're doing work on this type of thing, is there, I'm sure your engineering company's thought about this. Is, is, does it make sense to maybe add something like that on, at least for wiring and, and things like that?
You, you can put solar panels. We just got to, the unfortunate thing is, we didn't get too many original drawings, I believe. So we don't know, we got to do a little bit of research on the foundations and all that systems to figure out. But one good thing is, when your garage designed, was designed, at least the live load capacity was fifty pounds a square foot, or it may be even a little bit higher depending on the time. But right now, it's forty pounds a square foot. So you have a little bit of capacity in there, so we probably can make it work. We just got to do some research, dig up a couple of foundations and see what the size is and maybe do some soil testing to see what is the capacity to figure that out. But we have installed solar panels in other garages. One thing we recommend is, there's a couple, like Bergen County Justice Center has a garage with solar panels in there. They had issues with, they have sections of solar panels and when it snows and snows gets stuck there, they have to close the roof level because ice keeps falling. So you've got to think about all these things and figure out, make sure, if you're closing it, maybe close it completely to make sure that that doesn't happen or find a drainage system or something like that and put it in along with the design so that you don't have that problem.
All right, well, maybe can kick this to a committee to think about working, if we want to expand this project a little bit to encompass that. So it sounds like we have some work to do, but probably work to do. Yes, Councilman Boyer?
Just one more question. So you were talking about the lights. At some point, we like to put in cameras, right, in our parking garages?
Yeah.
And have that fiber connect to the police departments and, you know, possibly throughout town or something like that. But would it be, would it be a good plan to, to do the wiring and the lights along with the cameras while, while you're doing that? Or is that something separate? Or should we be concerned about the lighting?
It's kind of separate. With the lighting, you can do, but camera systems and lighting systems are completely different. They, they'll run separate, individual, you know, they don't interfere with each other. Really, just for the power, which is very little power for the cameras, you will take, pull it out at there. But you can do it separately.
Great. At this time, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask the public if they have any questions at all. Yeah, please, Mr. Hope?
Two simple questions. One of them is, we talked about solar panels, I had thought about that, thank you. How about electrical vehicles? I mean, a forty-five-year-old garage, it's. I mean, a 45-year-old garage, it's, was designed for the vehicles then. Five years ago, it looked like our entire vehicle fleet in the U.S. was going to be changing to electricals in 10 years. Now it looks like it's going to take forever. Who knows what's going to happen? But what adaptations would we have to do to be ready? That would not be particularly on risk, but that would be, allow us to be ready for the future, is one of them. There is an issue of Wi-Fi connectivity through concrete is very, very hard. So how would one do something like that? Because perhaps with that kind of connectivity, you can get to your cameras, Councilman Boyer. And finally, a question for our finance committee. Is this a project that we would give these consultants directly? Or would we beat it out to numerous contractors, given the scope and size of it?
So the first question was the electric vehicles. 50 pounds a square foot is the live load capacity. So generally, a parking garage stall is nine by 18. So it gives you a capacity of 8100 pounds. So unless you are parking all Hummers, Humvees, or whatever, generally, you are okay. So, because right now, they have reduced the capacity, like I said, to 40 pounds a square foot. Now the cost requirement is 40, which comes up to a little bit less than that. But really, if you look at all the electric vehicles, they are around 5,000 pounds or so. So you are really okay. Why, I'm not an electrical engineer, so I'm a structural engineer. But I think we haven't found that to be a bigger issue. We have seen it done in a lot of other garages. But we, I haven't heard anybody saying anything that is, connectivity is an issue or anything like that.
Thank you. And then I think, you know, we'll rely on our engineers and our parking professionals to figure out what the best way to bid the project out, so. And on our advice, so, thank you. Other questions?
Good evening, Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. When you mentioned during the construction that you were going to do the top level and you said you didn't want anybody parking below because debris might fall, will that work make the second floor, the top, the next floor down ceiling more of a problem that then has to be fixed right away? Will it exacerbate any, any other issues? Okay.
Generally, that's how we do it. And we, if we want, we can put some protection, but generally, it's not an issue. Concrete is generally pretty strong that way.
Other questions from the public? Okay. All right. Mr. Jaisana, thank you so much for the presentation, super informative, and thank you for coming. All right. We have this evening, a couple of ordinances for hearings that we have. First one's a finance ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you please read the the finance ordinance for hearing, please?
Ordinance number 25-3328, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to Establish the 2024 Salaries, Wages, or Compensations of and for the Officers and Employees of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey."
Thank you very much. Councilman Toth.
Thank, thank you, Council President. So this isn't, what this ordinance does is create a new position called, within the Department of Community Services, called the Director of Engineering and Public, Engineering and Public, I think we may need to add a word to that ordinance.
Engineering and Public Works.
Public Works, okay. Yes, but when you get into the first whereas, we're missing the word works.
Okay.
There's a typo.
There, yes, Scrivener's error. That, what, what this does, I'm, I don't want to give away what, what, what the, what the next ordinance for introduction is doing, but it gives us more flexibility in right sizing the Department of Community Services. It does not increase headcount. But it just gives us options for how we're going to arrange the department. So with that, I moved, sorry, I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Second. All right, with that, I'm going to declare the hearing open. Do I have any comments from the public on this ordinance? Okay, comments from council? Yes, please, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. I think it might be helpful for our city administrator just to talk about the potential and how we're sort of restructuring that department and why, if that would be okay. Because I think, I think it's important, we're, we are changing the structure. And I think it's important for the public to understand. Director Schreger's been doing a lot of jobs and we're trying to give, you know, give him as much help as possible. So, you know, we're trying something new and I think it's important for the public to further understand that.
Through you, Council President. So what, what this is doing is it is leaving, the ordinance leaves a DCS director in the ordinance if we care to go back to that arrangement. Currently, as Councilwoman Hamlet said, our engineer, Director of Everything, DCS, is a bit overloaded. So we're trying to streamline the areas in which he can oversee. So the, there is currently a construction official who oversees UCC. He does that anyway, that's his job, it's under state code. There is a land use manager that has been acting in that capacity, who has gotten that title quite recently, since our last land use manager resigned and moved on to another opportunity. He oversees code enforcement, zoning, planning. And then this position allows for Director Schreger to oversee engineering and public works and to streamline that. The only thing that it does currently is it adds, not only will Director Schreger report to me, but also the land use manager and the construction official will report to me. I've had as much as 18 directors in other municipalities report to me. Two more added to seven is really not a big deal. And they do have to come to me quite often, anyway. So it's just changing the structure a little bit of how it's operating, but it keeps everybody in DCS and it provides the same benefits and services to all of the residents. And I think it enables our professionals on staff to better serve the public by limiting the bandwidth that they have to oversee.
Great, great explanation. Other comments from council? All right, here now, I'm going to declare the hearing closed. We're going to move on to a second ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the Community Programs and Parking Services ordinance, please? First one.
Yes, ordinance number 25-3329, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to mention real quick that on page, on packet page number 11, there was a Scrivener's error. And it should begin with, for non-residents, reservations and payment of $14.95 per day is required. So the top section of that, under fees, page, packet page 11. This ordinance is to amend the Broad Street Garage, designating the open section of the top level as non-resident parking. Currently, only a portion of the parking spots are available for non-resident commuters, specifically 128 spaces. With the recent opening of the ground-level Broad Street Parking Lot, opening up 32 additional spaces for resident commuters and the high demand for non-resident commuters, this ordinance opens up the entire top level to non-resident commuters for a total of 170 spaces at $14.95 per day. As you will see in the ordinance for introduction in a few minutes, we will introduce more spaces for resident commuter parking. And with that, I would like to move this ordinance for hearing.
Second. All right, our, our hearing is open. At this time, would any members of the public like to comment on this ordinance? When you come up, please state your name and your address, please. This is why we do this.
Again, Don Nelson.
Want to hear some comment.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. So explain to me how this works. If I'm a resident, I know Mondays are usually pretty quiet, but then as you go during the week, the parking garage fills up. I have a couple of people, my daughter works in the city. The other day, she could not find a parking spot in the tier garage. So she had, she called the parking authority, or, I'm sorry, there was a woman, somebody at the parking authority, at the parking garage and said, you can park in the post office lot. Luckily, she was able to work from home. But how would this affect residents when there's more non-resident parking? We're taking 170 spots and only giving us 32 more. Shouldn't there be like a, and then how do these people call? And they call in at 5:00 in the morning, they call in the day before. How do, how does a resident know they can't park there? So if I go to the tier parking, I mean, the Broad Street Parking Garage and I can't find a spot and I drive all the way to the top and there's one left, am I going to get ticketed? So those are some kind of questions that I, that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council?
Council President?
Yes, please, Mr. Smallwood.
I'd like to answer the, the question.
Yeah, perfect.
So currently, the, the top-tier garage is, the majority of it is for non-resident commuters. There is a specific, it's not even outlined, right? So it's, you've got 42 spaces that are for resident parking and 128 spaces for non-resident parking. With the opening up of the 32 spaces on the ground level, granted, we're losing, we're giving up 42 spaces and only gaining 32. So there's a 10 parking spot difference there. And that's why I mentioned in a later introduction, we're going to be opening up more resident commuter parking spots. Going to the top level of the Broad Street Garage, there will be signage that will clearly state "non-resident commuter parking." So hopefully, with the opening, if we can get this, with the introduction of the next ordinance, we'll be able, be able to open up an additional 50 spaces for resident commuter parking.
Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. And also, post-COVID, the parking lots behind the post office and the Chestnut Street Lot, which had originally been for downtown employee parking only, have been opened to residents and to commuters. And I have never had a problem finding a space in the post office parking lot. That's always available and that's also a very close walk to the train station, just from the other direction.
Councilwoman Hamlet.
I don't want to throw a wrench into this, but, you know, I've been looking at the, the empty lot counts from Nicole Swicki. And I guess my question, and maybe this would go to you, Nicole, is when you look at the empty, and it's not really non-resident or resident, but when you look at the amount of lots that have empty spaces for employees, why would we put the employees in that garage when, wouldn't it be better to save those for commuters, whether it be residents or non-residents? Because they're the ones who, you know, if it rains, they got to go right to the train. And when you look at the K Lot, for example, the, the percentage is like 63% for employees. So I'm just curious, have we looked at that option as well, as far as opening? Or whether or not we have all the employees in the right lots? Because they sort of seem staggered everywhere. And then, just a question, I don't, you know.
No, very good question. But the tier garage is also in the heart of the downtown that, I mean, the 47 Maple Street Building is a major, you know, medical building that does, you know, a number of the downtown employees do park in the tier garage because it backs up to that. So I think that by taking that option away from downtown employees, wouldn't be.
No, sorry, I mean for the, for the, for the Broad Street Garage.
To take the Broad Street Garage away from employees?
I was just, I was just asking whether or not it made sense to have employee parking in the Broad Street Garage.
Well, currently, it does, but not that many employees. I don't think that that's their ideal location to park, because that's not in the downtown. So more employees parking in tier parking garage versus Broad Street.
Other questions?
Are you, I think, maybe you're, I think I'm understanding your question differently.
Okay.
And that is, should we take, eliminate employees' spots in the Broad Street Garage, right?
Right. Because, well, to, to, to Don Nelson's point, you know, I get calls from residents a lot. One, just the other day, was why are we even letting non-residents park in that garage? Why are we letting, you know, residents? So my question is, when I look at the employee counts, why do employees even park there to be in with? Even if it's 20 cars, it's taking away from residents and non-residents commuters when we have empty lots that we're, I'm looking at the numbers that we could dedicate to employees.
So the numbers aren't based upon whether that's a resident or a downtown employee parking in that lot. They just scan a valid permit and since it's a dual-permitted lot, we wouldn't know.
Understand, but like, for example, the K Lot, for 12 months, is sitting at, for the most part, 70% capacity for employee only.
So that we know is designated just for employees.
Right, designated for employees, right.
But we don't know who, what the percentage of residents versus employees are parking in the garage.
Right, yep. Yep, no, I understand. I've just been thinking about it because I'm, I've, I've been thinking about just the location of, you know, we've got, we've got bagged meters up, you know, Springfield, that some are, a lot are, a lot are empty. So, and then it's like, our resident, our employees parking in the garage because maybe, you know, they don't want their car in the sun all day. You know, I'm not trying to say that they shouldn't park in the garage. But when I have residents and non-residents saying they can't get to the train, they can't, the automatic go-to is right there, right? That's the, that's the quickest one.
If I may, just having been a downtown employee for more than 20 years, there are, the, the bagged meters require prepaid parking and that only makes sense for somebody who works five days a week, Monday to Friday. Folks who work, say, for the salons, work Tuesday through Saturday, so they're not going to prepay. And there are a number of businesses that are certainly much more convenient to the Broad Street Garage, from Sage to, there are some office buildings, offices near there. Those folks are not going to want to walk from the K Street Lot or even from the post office lot. So a few employees in the Broad Street Garage certainly makes sense that that's just how it's going to fall out.
Through you, Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Boyer.
So at the end of the day, we're going to have 82 resident spots being open, correct? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Yeah.
We, we have 32 open now.
Now, and then.
And then an additional, what we have on average in the tier garage that are open, typically on average, 50 spaces.
50 spaces, okay, on average. So, yeah, so.
82.
Available. The other question that I have, at some point, can we get a tracking system? Like an app or something so that I can tell people when they're rushing for? When I worked in the city, I was late for the train all the time. But, you know, it'd be great to know as you're making your cup of coffee, kind of where, where to park, what, you know, what's available, what's not, you know, that way you can adjust your timing. I think, I believe you just said that we wouldn't know because of the permits, kind of scan in two places, or?
We don't know which person, yes, is parking in the space, whether they're a resident or a downtown employee. Because when the permit is scanned, it just says that they have a valid permit.
Got it. So maybe, possibly, it would make sense to, and I'm just throwing this out there to have two different types of permits, so we can distinguish between resident and non-resident parking.
So we do have two different types currently, but when it's in a dual-purpose lot, like the Broad Street Garage, that both permit types can park there. That's why it's giving the, the system the valid parking rights.
Got it, but it doesn't distinguish between the two.
It doesn't say they have a resident permit or they have a downtown employee permit, no, you're right.
So you can't tell the number of available spots for, you know, resident or non-resident within that tier garage? Yeah, the Broad Street Garage. So maybe it's just something that we look at in terms of technology-wise to see, you know, available spaces? Because maybe, maybe we do have available spaces, but certain spaces are just not available to certain people when they, when they roll up. But it would be nice to know, hey, I have an app or, you know, or, or something where, where they know they can immediately park where there's availability. And this is maybe for future, down the road somewhere, so.
Thank you. Other comments, Councilwoman Hamlet?
I guess, maybe we can take this up another time. I just, when I look at the green, and I know, Claire, you make a good point about whether, if you're, you know, if you're working five days a week, it's prepaid. But there is a decent amount of availability when I look at the green bag meters. If you look at Springfield and Irving, it's like 78%. Beechwood and Euclid's a little higher. Tier Garage is 65%. Tier Garage is 65% full with employees. I don't know, I just wonder if we should just take another look at, because I see a lot of bagged meters that are empty. So if residents are running around fighting for spots and we have no parking, I think that we should maybe put that back in your committee, Kevin, just to take a look at, because I just see a lot of, I see a lot of empty bagged meters on the weekends, and it kind of drives me crazy. So maybe I'm wrong, but I think, and I think Claire makes a good point with some of that, you know, number of days and prepaid parking, so maybe just take a look at it after this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Smallwood?
Just to address the, the, I, I think that is an issue, because on the weekend, the, the green prepaid bag meters are for downtown employees, and on the weekends, most of the employees aren't working.
Right.
Right. So we're taking up spaces that could be used, but if someone's driving up and sees that green, sees the prepaid green bag, they know that they can't park there, so.
Thank you. Yeah, one comment I would have is, you know, we have, we have another ordinance for, that we're going to have a hearing on around fees. When was the last time we looked at the non-resident parking fee of $14.95?
That was just...
Is it last year? Have we just raised it?
It's just a few years ago, yes.
Okay.
It was $12.
$12? And have we had any significant drop off in demand since we raised it from $12 to $15, roughly?
No. I mean, obviously, after COVID, a lighter work week for some people, so Mondays and Fridays tend to be a little light. But Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, we fill out.
Right. So, I mean, if, if we're, these are fees that, from my perspective, we should always look at to, to see what we can get out of these things, because some, it's a, you know, the real estate is valuable, it's a great amenity that we have in the train line, and I think there's a lot of people who would pay probably more for that. I remember the, an issue we had in the, the DeForest Lots, where we were having commuters who were happy to just get ticketed in there, where they were paying 50 bucks a day to hop on the train. So there is a tier of non-resident commuters, I think, and this is something I think we should look at relatively often around what the right price is for non-resident parkers in our town. Thank you. Yeah, that's my only comment.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? All right, I'm going to declare this hearing closed. We're going to move on to our third ordinance for hearing. This is another Community Programs and Parking Services. Madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 25-3330, an ordinance to amend the code Appendix A Schedule of Fees contained in the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, council president. This is ID number 25-3330, an ordinance amending the membership fees to the Aquatic Center and Golf Course. This decision, made by a bipartisan Department of Community Programs Advisory Board, wasn't easy, but it is a necessary step to ensure we can continue to maintain and improve our facility's responsibilities. The need for change, first, it's, it's important to note that the fees at these facilities have remained the same price since 2016. In the past nine years, operational costs have increased significantly, and we are at, at a point where it's no longer sustainable to keep fees frozen. One of the biggest challenges we face is staffing. Since 2016, the minimum wage has nearly doubled, going from $8.38 to $15.49 per hour. In the summer, we hire over 100 staff members to help with daily operations, and has become a major factor in our budget. Inflation likewise has impacted the costs of goods and services necessary to operate the facility. With regards to the revenues and surpluses, revenue and surplus, while the Aquatic Center generates revenue that covers the basic operational costs, any additional revenue, around $300,000 last year, goes into the city's general fund, not a dedicated aquatic center fund. The surplus helps support both the pool's capital projects and other capitals, and other city capital projects. Again, all capital improvements at the pool are covered by the city, i.e. the taxpayers. Like most other city capital improvements, the 2018 resurfacing project for $475,000 is a good example. The amounts generated at the pool, at the pool beyond its operating expenses offsets potential tax increase for residents. Planning for the future. We also have to look ahead to the long-term needs of our facilities. Our infrastructure, our infrastructure is aging, and we're planning for some important upgrades. 2025, $75,000 for a new shade structure. In 2026, we need a $25,000 for an ADA compliance study. In 2027, $300,000 estimated for ADA required upgrades, and estimated $500,000 for repairs or replacement of our slides. In addition, unexpected maintenance issues can arise at any time. For example, this past summer, a critical pool pump failed, forcing us to shut down the pool on one of the hottest days of the year. Thanks to a backup pump, we were able to reopen the pool within 24 hours. But replacing a pump alone costs between $8,000 and $10,000. We also need to replace a water heater, estimated at $12,000 to $15,000, along with a new water heater for the women's shower area. Now regarding the fee adjustments, unfortunately, there has been misleading political messaging that has misrepresented the changes being proposed. While the percentages may look substantial, 25 to 66%, those only apply to guest fees. As to the general membership fees, both the percentages and the actual dollar amounts are modest. As an example, $20 increase for a family membership, resident family membership, that's 5%. $40 increase for non-resident family membership. $10 increase for resident individual membership. $30 increase for non-resident individual membership. A $5 increase for senior memberships. $6 increase for adult guest passes. Subsidized family memberships remain unchanged at $320, and subsidized individual memberships remain unchanged at $130. The adult guest pass increase from $9 to $15, which is 66%, is designed to encourage more memberships over daily guest visits, which will streamline, which will streamline operations and reduce congestion at the entrance. Additionally, the snack shack will remain, which is maintained by an outside vendor, the prices will remain the same for the fourth consecutive year. The fear-mongering and political theatrics surrounding this issue that was created and voted on by a bipartisan advisory board are completely disingenuous, especially given the authors have experience on this dais and are well aware of how the pool's finances interact with the cities. We're taking a responsible approach. It's critical to remember that while the pool generates revenue, those funds go into the city's general budget, which is used to fund both ongoing operations and larger capital improvements. The fee adjustments we are making now are proactive steps to ensure that our pool and recreational facilities remain safe, well-maintained, and accessible for years to come. As it relates to the golf course fees, which are currently extremely complicated and have made, which we've made much simpler, the seniors and youth membership remains the same at $40. Adults are increasing by $5, and non-resident is increasing by $20. The fees per round during the week average, currently average, $6.75. We are proposing to increase them to $7, and guest fees to $9. On the weekend, the member fee per round will, will be $10, and the guest fees $12. We understand that these changes, changes are not always popular, but they are essential for the long-term sustainability of our city's amenities. Thank you for your understanding and, and support as we continue to invest in the future of our community. And with that, council president, I'd like to move this ordinance for hearing.
Second. Thank you. All right, our hearing is open on this ordinance. Would any members of the public like to comment on it, please?
Chantel Garcia-Landman, L-A-N-D-M-A-N, I'm at 128 Beekman Road. First, I have some questions about the basis for this increase. The pool's operating at over $300,000 profit, as you mentioned, and the golf course is breaking even. So why do we need to increase fees? What is the problem we are trying to solve? If the increase is intended to cover capital improvements or other expenses, what are they and why are we making them now? Why are pool and golf fee increases the best source of funding? In 2024, council committed to a budget with a stated goal to secure grants for some of the Department of Community Programs' capital improvements. Have you exhausted all of those grant opportunities? More information and transparency would be appreciated by the public. Help us understand why this makes sense, or let's work on a better way to solve the problem. Second, just because you can doesn't mean you should. Summit's pool fees are lower than some of the neighboring municipalities. We should highlight this as a feature of our city, use it to attract new residents. It's something we should be proud of, not an argument used to justify an unnecessary increase. The proposed fee increases will have a disproportionate impact on fixed income seniors and lower-income families. Summit families and seniors are struggling to keep up with increases in expenses as it is. As a weekly volunteer at Grace, I see firsthand how residents of Summit are struggling to buy food, pay rent, access healthcare, and more. Let's treat our residents with dignity and not force people to make yet another difficult choice in making ends meet. Finally, I encourage you to reflect on how this ordinance aligns with your principles. Councilwoman Comanson, Councilwoman Toth, you campaigned for more transparency, community, and fiscal responsibility. Voting against this ordinance is an opportunity to demonstrate your commitment to those values. Councilwoman Boyer, you've described yourself as, quote, "a reduced lunch kid in a low-income household in Summit who consistently prioritizes the interests of all residents, including those in East Summit," end quote. You have an opportunity to reflect that prioritization by voting against this ordinance. Councilwoman Palowski, when campaigning for council, you, quote, "pledge to work tirelessly to find this hard-working community a little bit of relief, which should help out with affordability," end quote. Your promise of a little bit of relief can be honored tonight if you vote against this ordinance. Council members, you have an obligation to represent all of your constituents. We are counting on you to honor the promises you made to the public and act with integrity. Please vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, if you have a, if it's a...
She emailed it.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council. Councilman Boyer? Oh, where, who wanted to go? Councilman, or Councilwoman Comanson, do you want to speak? Please do.
I'm not in support of raising the fees of our public pool and municipal golf course. When I was canvassing last year and speaking to voters, a concern that came up over and over again was affordability. Our community pool is a lifeline to some families. It's their entertainment for the summer. This is a time when our neighbors are feeling squeezed financially from forces beyond our control. With all the talk of trade wars, rising grocery prices, and layoffs in the news, I believe we should provide whatever relief we can. The pool is operating on a $300,000 surplus, and I will not support raising the membership prices just because we can. I, I say this as a proud member of the Summit Pool. My family joins every year. We love the pool. It's beautiful. Every year, I just think, wow, I can't believe this is, this is our city pool. But I, I don't see the need to, to raise this. There's, there's not a good reason to do it, and especially the membership, I'm sorry, not the membership, the guest fees, I feel like that's a very steep increase, and I feel like, I was wondering, is this designed to discourage people from bringing guests? Because when we bring guests, we bring in kids, my kids' friends, that live in Summit, and for whatever reason, their family did not invest in a membership. Last year, I could bring three kids for $21 during the week. This year, it's two kids for $20, and it feels, it feels like it's designed to discourage people from bringing guests.
Thank you. Other comments?
Through you, council president.
Councilman Boyer, please.
So, the Family Aquatic Center slide and bathhouse improvements are projected to cost over $800,000 in combining 2026 and 2027. I've also seen what happens when council delays necessary infrastructure repairs, like what happened at the roof at Tallockville. So ensuring timely maintenance is critical. That said, I completely understand the concerns about affordability. As a resident myself, not rich, not broke, just getting by, it's a line from The Beat Nuts, left, a little part out. I do feel the sting of any fee increase. Costs for field hockey, lacrosse, band, field trips, and even school lunches all add up, and affordability in Summit remains a major concern for me. One key point to note, yes, I was a reduced lunch kid, and my parents didn't have to pay for anything, really. And especially this increase will continue, especially our residents at the Summit Housing Authority. There's no increase for anyone that's a reduced lunch kid. So that's, that's a good thing. But secondly, I'd like to kick this over to our business administrator. Sorry, Tammy, but I think that the residents need a rundown of why this $300,000 is needed. I mentioned some things about capital improvements in the year 2026 and 2027, but I'd like to kick it over to you so that you can give a full breakdown of why this cash is needed.
Please, our business administrator.
Through you, council president. I think that a couple of the points have already been made, but when you're, when you're looking at our overall budget, yes, it appears that the operations of the pool, I think they were about 370 or 360 last year, but you're only looking at the operating budget. And then the revenue was anticipated, I believe at 640, I believe we collected 670. That's what I see in my financials, waiting for the auditors to confirm that my numbers are correct. So at a glance, that looks like $300,000. So I think Councilman Smallwood talked about capital projects. We did have a pool resurfacing for $470,000. I can't recall other ones prior to that. I know that there were some before my tenure here even, even began. That debt service runs over, depending on the type of project it is and the use of a life associated with it, it can run 15 years, 20, 25 years, even 30, depending on the structure. So I'd have to do some lengthy research to break down every capital bond that we go out for notes for, to tell you which part of it was a DCP. I could do that, but I'd have to look through ordinances. And during budget time, it's a little bit difficult right now to do that. But rest assured, there are debt service payments that do include capital improvements to the Aquatic Center. There is also unaccounted for, a lot of administrative time, I had the good fortune or misfortune of having to handle payroll for three months last summer while we looked for a new payroll clerk, and I got a crash course lesson in what happens when we start hiring over 100 seasonal employees. And it takes a ton of hours for payroll, human resources, and, well, I was payroll, so, to accomplish all of that onboarding, getting everybody paid, processing all that paperwork. So there's a lot of other costs that aren't in that particular operational budget that you look at in, in the city's budget that are associated with the Aquatic Center. So let's estimate that, you know, 100 or even 150,000 of that extra 300 is associated with those costs, and it's just an estimate. So you leave 100 or 150, 150 to 200,000 that's left. That money goes to the general budget. When you look at all of the revenues in the general budget, the Aquatic Center revenues are in there. That helps offset the taxes, so it's coming right back to the residents of Summit in that fashion. If we don't have that revenue, then we either, A, have to cut a service to account for that, you know, 100 to 200,000, or we have to figure out some other method of revenue. And I can tell you that, I know the Economic Advisory Committee has worked on it. Revenue sources are shrinking. They are not growing for municipalities. We are limited. We, we live in a town, we're very fortunate, where there is a lot of... We, we live in a town, we're very fortunate, where there is a lot of donation opportunities, and people are quite generous. And so we're able to do a lot of improvements, especially in DCP, with those generous donations, and that helps a lot. But there is so much more than just that operational budget that you're looking at that goes into what operates the Aquatic Center. I hope that helps.
Very much so. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Do you have any other comments?
Yeah, through you, Council President, just to, just to finish up. So, at the end of the day, if this $300,000 that you can kind of use for something breaks down or something needs to be fixed, you know, if we don't have that, there's a possibility that we raise taxes, right? I mean, you have to get the revenue from somewhere, correct? So, and with the increase of the minimum wage, I just, I just want the residents to know what the impact will be if we don't do it. It's easy to sit up here and say, well, let's not do this. Let's not increase anything, right? That's the easiest thing to do. That's the easiest decision. Everybody's happy, which is keeping it the way it is. However, the hard decision and the tough decision is to say, well, let's look for worst-case scenario. If a pump breaks, the roof falls off, you know, if we need more employees to work that summer, well, here it is. We can use it. But I, I think that we need to lay that out for the residents so that they can understand it. And I don't know if we're, I don't know if this needs to be done today. Maybe some other council members can opine on that. But I think laying it out for the residents so that they can see where the money is going would be beneficial. Thank you.
Councilwoman Toth.
Through you, Council President. I am a fan of user fees for city amenities that residents can choose to use and do not have to. Here, however, we're already running a $300, $300,000 surplus, which is more than sufficient to cover operating expenses and certainly, over time, all of the capital projects that, that Councilmember Smallwood suggested. I don't think that we should be using user fees necessar, we should not be increasing user fees with the goal of adding to the general fund. If we're looking for revenue sources, I, I would suggest that we look elsewhere at city amenities for which we don't charge user fees, and perhaps start doing that rather than raising user fees on an amenity that already generates surpluses that pay for not just the operating revenues, but for the additional things that people have listed.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Just a question. I guess my question to you, Councilwoman Toth, have you looked at the payroll costs and all the other costs associated? You don't have to answer this question, but, you know, can we identify where the $300,000 surplus has gone, Tammy? Because from what I've looked at, and I'll let you speak in a second. What I've looked at, it's certainly not a $300 surplus. And everybody knows that I look at the bill list more than anybody every week.
That is true.
I could tell you how many lifeguards, how many t-shirts. You know, I'm looking here, I've been looking at the 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020 capital budget and the six-year forecast for that. We've been kicking the can down the road on certain capital projects. The slide, the ADA requirements, I'm looking at the 2021 capital budget. I mean, this is paper version of the, of the pool, just give me one second. And 2021, we had approved 250, and I believe the resurfacing may have been 250. We have to look, look at some of those numbers. But we anticipated in 2023 that we would do the slide. In 2024, we would do the ADA equipment, ADA requirements. It's 2025. They're not going to even be in this year's budget. So, you know, we have to make the hard decisions of whether or not these slides, you know, do we want the children to go down the slides? Because if we want the children to go down the slides, then we need to fix the slides. And we're going to make the unpopular decision of raising fees. But this is certainly not a partisan decision. If you do your research and you see the debt service that we pay for capital improvements, it's significant. I talked about it at the last capital budget meeting. The Tatlock Field House should have been repaired a long time ago, and now it's costing us more. I think 11 out of 12 members of the DCP Advisory Board voted for this. I will say I'm open to sending it back to finance if Claire has a strong opinion, and she's looked at the fact that we've certainly sent a $300,000 surplus back to Tammy. But I don't think we have, and I'd like to hear from David Guida as well, if you don't mind, David, just about the capital projects and, and, you know, there are a lot of city costs. We have a gentleman who runs our pool that is not, that is in the DCP, in Aaron Schreger's budget. We have David Guido, we have Mark. There's a lot of city time that you don't see in here. So David, if you don't, wouldn't mind, and then Tammy, if you wouldn't mind answering that surplus question, because I think it's something that we should really clear up.
I think Tammy did speak to that already. But David, you want to answer?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a lot of costs. To Administrator Baldwin's point, there's costs at City Hall, there's also costs within our department. I would say on any given day, there's at least two of us who spend majority of our day down at the Aquatic Center during the season. And that's not even mentioning the hours that we spend doing registrations, troubleshooting ID cards. So there's a lot that happens with our full-time staff, with staff within the office that's also not reflected within this. A comment that I heard about the affordability. If we want to talk about affordability, one of the largest things that our department handles over the summer outside of the pool is a summer camp. The summer camp allows for affordable childcare. By keeping the rates at the, by increasing the rates at the Family Aquatic Center, it will in turn allow us to maintain the camp being so affordable because a lot of these capital improvements that we have coming down the pike, like the basketball courts, like the family restroom that is part of the ADA upgrades, all of that will go to enhancing the camp experience. And ultimately, that also enhances the experience of all the other members, but keeps the price for that childcare down. A note on the subsidy, Councilman Smallwood did mention that the subsidy rates aren't changing. At the same time, we do have a departmental policy that even if you do not receive the free and reduced lunch, but you can come to us, fill out a form, and express a hardship, as long as you can provide some sort of backup, you, that free and reduced lunch rate will be honored. We work very closely with the representatives at Grace and other organizations within town that if there are families who are identified who can't even meet that 160, or, sorry, 130 for an individual or 320 for a family, what we will do is we'll take money from the trust fund, 20% fees that we charge for other programs that happen at the Aquatic Center, and attribute that and put that back in the budget so that they are paying the free and reduced lunch price. So, we as a staff and as a department make sure that nobody is denied access to the pool. So, just for the record, should anybody have issues with these increase and have hardships, we're an open door and we, we will make it work with the residents. Does that, in the capital projects, we did look it up today, it was 475. And all of this, if you, when we calculated it today, it looks like there's going to be an expected $50,000 of additional revenue from the pool. This $50,000 isn't even going to cover the capital project that we're looking at doing this year, which is the basketball courts and the shade structure. So while 300,000 is a large number, there's debt service, there's additional fees that are not reflected, the soft costs, and even this increase is not going to necessarily cover all of the improvements we plan on doing over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Do you have, Madam Mayor?
I think one of the questions that the resident raised was about grants. Could you speak to that a little bit? Because I know you work hard on grants.
Yes, we, we look at every single grant that we can. I mean, there was a grant that even came through today that had to do with supporting individuals with disabilities. And I'm like, oh, maybe this can go towards our family bathroom and the ADA upgrades at the Family Aquatic Center. We, every grant that is made available, especially the state and county grants, we jump on them with the grant writers right away. There's not one of those grants that we miss when they're made available. So, we've exhausted all those. And even with corporate sponsorships, I know that that came up, the well is dry. We, we tap on every single person that we can.
Great. Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Comanson.
Thank you, Council President. I just had a few things that I heard and I wanted to clarify. One was talking about raising the membership rates, and then if you don't raise the membership rates, people's taxes might increase. So are we saying we'll tax the pool members so we don't tax the entire city? That, that's what I heard. If we, if we, we're raising these, is that what?
No, that's not how it works. No.
But, but I think somebody made that point. If we don't raise these, we're going to have to raise people's taxes. Somebody, somebody said that. Okay. Another thing, the slides, this packet, it just, it doesn't say anything about slides. It doesn't say anything about repairs. It basically just says that, you know, we want to raise the rates to be in line with the other towns. I mean, that's all that says. Additionally, I just think it's out of touch. I think it's out of touch when we're raising, we're raising the rates for the Aquatic Center, we're fundraising for public playgrounds, and we didn't fundraise anything for the paddle courts. I'm just saying, it just seems out of touch. That's, that's the last option.
Just a point of clarification on the paddle courts. There were several, there was a Union County grant that we got for that. There was a USA paddle court grant that we got for that. So there was, and that dates back, I want to say, to 2018. And it's funny, I even remember in 2018, there was comments, "Why are you applying for this grant for paddle courts when there's playgrounds?" So there's always needs in town that, there's only so much, so many grants that we can apply for to make everything work, and we try our hardest to leave every box unchecked and to the point of affordability. Like I mentioned before, we're gonna, we will work with every single resident with filling out that form and working out with free and reduced lunch rates.
Thank you, David. Councilwoman Palowski, you haven't had a chance to go yet.
Yeah, I, people keep saying $300,000 surplus, but it's really not a surplus at all, right? The way that the pool's finances operate, it's, it's within the city. It doesn't operate like a utility. The pools, the money that the pool brings in isn't specifically earmarked for all pool expenses. So when you say that we're going to take the revenue that the pool brings in and subtract just the operating expenses, completely ignoring all the other expenses that go into this, money that we bond for capital improvements, et cetera, et cetera, you don't account for any of that, you can't call it a surplus. And to do so is very misleading to the public, and I fear it's for a purpose, but I just don't think anybody should be using that because it's just not a surplus. And everybody up here knows better.
Through you, Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Boyer.
I know. Just give me one second. I know you want to move on. But I, I want to speak to the residents that this actually really impacts because I'm one of them. We're not talking about subsidized housing, some people that live in subsidized or getting subsidized. That's not what we're talking about because there's no really impact on them. What we're really talking about is the middle-class residents who have children, who have to pay for all these different things that get no help, right? But, you know, the lacrosse, the field hockey, I mentioned it before. Yeah, you know, we're, we're feeling it, and I understand. I get it. And I wouldn't be up here in support of this if it wasn't needed. But I would ask that this council actually lays it out for people and families like mine. Because, you know, I have the view, I understand what we spend money on. I understand why it's needed. But maybe the residents out there who are sitting home saying, "Oh, there's another thing that I have to pay for. Here we go again," right? And it does matter for them, right? We don't have $2 million houses and, you know, whatever, right? It's a real thing, and I understand it. I'm speaking to you. I get it. And we need to show you what this money is for. That it's just not, we're just not raising it for any reason because we just want to do it. We feel like doing it. There's a, there's a need for this. So I would ask that this council and our business administrator, maybe we just need to be a little more transparent and lay it out better for them, for our residents. I'll just say that.
Thank you. Other comments?
Councilman.
Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you. Yes, I just, I wanted to touch on the, the grants. In fact, we had, one of the pumps, the heater, our heating pumps for the pool broke. And we were able, working with our city administrator, able to secure a $50,000 grant that we hadn't even received yet. And we repurposed, I believe, is it repurposed the, the actual, thank you. We repurposed the grant so that we could use it at the pool. You know, we're talking about nominal fees over a nine-year period that has not been increased at all. You know, the fees, the majority of the fees increase are for non-residents and guests. As Councilman President mentioned earlier regarding parking, you know, we think we should probably charge more for the premium parking for non-residents who don't pay taxes here. Councilwoman Toth, I'm glad to hear that you are for user fee versus raising taxes. But as our city minister had mentioned, we're, we're limited on revenue generating. I mean, I hope you're not suggesting that we start charging to enter our, enter our playgrounds and parks. You know, this is, our aquatic center, which I belong to as well, is absolutely beautiful. It's in fantastic shape. I gave the example earlier that last summer, we had, on one of the hottest days, we had to close the pool because the pump broke. We were fortunate enough that we actually had the exact backup pump. We had to bring in DPW and install, install that, and they did it within 24 hours. If we didn't have that backup pump to order it and receive it, we would have literally had to have shut down the pool for weeks, not days, weeks. I don't know about any other council members here, but I'm not quite sure I wanted to get the, I wanted, want to get those emails from residents saying, "Why is the pool closed?" There are certain things that we just cannot keep kicking the can down the road on. You know, the amount of money that we have to spend for paying our employees has doubled. We've gone from $8.38 to $15.40, almost doubled. $8.38 to $15.49 per hour. Even with these fee increases, we are still one of the least expensive pools in the surrounding towns. And we're not trying to compete with them and, hey, you know, they're charging $600 a year. Maybe we should charge $600 a year. That's not how we came to this conclusion. We came to this conclusion because it had been nine years since the fees had been raised. For a family, it's $20. Over a nine-year period, there's a lot that has happened at that pool. If this, if the slides start deteriorating any further, or if they break, we're going to shut them down. We have to shut them down. I don't want to disappoint those kids. So, you know, again, having quote-unquote surplus of $300,000 is just not simply the case. We are not, as the Department of Community Services Advisory Board, we didn't sit down and say, hey, let's see how much more money we can make. That's not the case at all. And I, I thought I gave a, it was probably the longest introduction to an ordinance or resolution.
It was very long.
And, because I...
But it was good.
I, I wanted to cover everything I possibly could and answer as many questions as possible. And I, I hope that I did that. And, you know, again, we're trying to maintain this facility so that it meets the standards of our residents.
Thank you. Other, other comments? All right, I'm, I'm just going to close with a couple of things. When I saw this originally on the, the agenda, I'm like, all right, this is an ordinance. I did, I thought this, we would talk about this for all of three minutes. And I think, I get it. I think people have been ginned up that this is... And I think, I get it, I think people have been ginned up that this is some sort of big thing where we're trying to take more money out of the residents, and we've got this huge profit in place. And I feel bad for people who have been led down that road because some of the people who are promoting that narrative know better. They don't. Some of them have sat up on this dais. They understand the operation, how the pool works. When you sit here for enough years, you will understand how the operation of the pool works. We don't make $300,000 off the pool. We don't. As Ms. Baldwin eloquently put it, there's all sorts of expenses we don't categorize as expenses against the pool. As David mentioned, he's there all the time in the summer. His salary doesn't go against the pool's, into the pool's operating budget. Ms. Baldwin, when she spends her time there, that doesn't go into the pool's operating budget. None of that does. We do not run the pool as utility. And the people who are putting out this narrative that we're making all this money know that. And it's not fair because I think there are a lot of residents who are now confused because this is complicated, and they're trusting that this narrative is true. And it's just not. We do not make $300,000 off the pool. And that doesn't even include the fact that we do have capital projects down the works on the capital budget. I, you know, quick math, it looks like we have 900,000 in capital improvements that we would like to do to the pool. You have to pay interest on that. You have to pay down principal over the time. We don't put that against our revenue off the pool. So this is a myth that we make $300,000. And again, I get it, this is complicated. I don't, you know, people have a lot of questions, there are a lot of new people up on the council might not understand all these things. And that's fine. You can vote the way you'd like to vote. But if you're voting because you think we're making all this money, this is not true. The fact of the matter is, there has been a ton of increase in costs since this has been done. We've had a huge spike in inflation. Washington spent like drunken sailors for four years, and we have all this inflation. The pool fee hasn't gone up in eight years. It's going up 5% in one year. And I'm not belittling that for some people, that extra $20 doesn't matter. But put it in context, that's a half a percent per year. Okay? That's not, in real terms, the cost of using our pool has dropped dramatically in eight years, in real terms. And if we want to be good financial stewards, we need to make, as Councilman Smallwood says, sometimes unpopular decisions of raising some fees. This is a user fee. And we have to put money into our facilities to keep them nice. Someone mentioned, you know, Tatlock Field. No one wanted to make the tough decision to do that. That prior council kicked it down the road. And the reality is, that is going to cost the city more money because they didn't have the guts to actually go and fix it when it needed to be fixed. We have capital improvements that need to be made in the pool. If we don't, and we don't raise fees, and we're scraping for money, we're going to, the idea will be, "Well, let's just kick that down the road." And when we do have to finally fix it, it will cost a lot more money. That is not financial stewardship. That is not being prudent with our taxpayers' money. And so we have to sometimes make decisions like this. Like I said, I was, I looked at this, this is the most logical, like, thing, and again, I get it, for some people, 20 bucks is a big deal. But as Councilman Boyer pointed out, we have made a carve-out for the people whose this would be most affected by. We've already talked about that. And I get it, some people really care about that, and they should. And I'm psyched that we have someone come up and speak passionately about those people in the community. But I'm happy that Mr. Guida and Mr. Erowski and our community advisory board have made carve-outs for that. And this is a user fee. So I support this thing. I think it's the prudent, it's the fiscally responsible thing. If we want to be good fiscal stewards and claim that we are, this, to me, is a no-brainer. I'm closing the hearing. All right.
Can I make any comments?
Nope, we are done. You've got to be here on time.
I ran over here. I'm going to speak.
No, no, you cannot speak.
I'm going to speak anyways.
No, sir.
Excuse me.
Sir.
Public comments ended.
It was closed.
Did we close public comments? Please sit down, sir.
Don't want to go there.
Please sit down, sir.
Sit down, sir.
He can submit an email.
You can submit an email if you'd like.
I ran through the door.
Please.
No.
Respectfully, I'd like to speak.
Respectfully, you need to be here on time. We closed public comments.
Respectfully, I'd like to speak.
Sir.
You may submit an email. Thank you.
You're messing with the wrong guy. Tell him.
Oh, I'm-
Be with it.
Oh, my gosh. Bye. All right. Wow. Okay. We've now got a few ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, will you please read Finance Ordinance, the first one, please?
Ordinance number 25-3328, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled an ordinance to establish the 2024 salaries, wages, or compensations of and for the officers and employees of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Having fairly recently closed the hearing on this ordinance, I move this ordinance for final consideration, for final adoption.
Your second.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Second ordinance for final consideration, the first, Community Programs and Parking Services. Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 25-3329, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic or on municipal property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Having just heard this hearing, I move to adopt this ordinance.
Second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Second, Community Programs and Parking Services Ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you please read this one?
Ordinance number 25-3330, an ordinance to amend the code, Appendix A, Schedule of Fees Contained in the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Having just heard this hearing, I move to adopt this ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Nay.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
No.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving right along.
We have a five-minute break. It's been two hours.
Sure, let's have a five-minute recess. All right, we're going to get going again. Everyone enjoyed their break. All right, we're on to our resolutions portion of our meeting. We're going to start off with some finance resolutions. Councilwoman Toth.
Oh.
I know, I know. We're into introduction.
Oh, I forgot. Wow, I thought we got through all that. I wouldn't have had the break if I knew we had those. All right, let's get going. So we have ordinances for introduction. We have one, the first one, Madam Clerk, can you read, please read our first one from safety and health.
Yes. ID number 11707, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-19, Mid-Block Crosswalks.
Thank you so much. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. Again, as our city clerk said, this is ID number 11707. This ordinance has been brought forward in response to a request from Kent Place School to donate and install a rapid rectangular flashing beacon, formerly known as RRFB, at the existing mid-block crosswalk connecting their facility at 42 Norwood Avenue to the parking lot at 75 Norwood Avenue. While the crosswalk is already in use, the city must take formal legislative action to officially establish it within our traffic code before we can accept the donation and proceed with the installation. This proposal has been reviewed and approved by both the CAPS Committee and the Safety Committee, confirming that the crosswalk meets necessary safety and traffic management standards. Additionally, as part of this ordinance, we are recommending the removal of a previously approved mid-block crosswalk at 1 Springfield Avenue. In 2016, the common council approved this crosswalk to accommodate a donation from the adjacent property owner for an RRFB installation. However, the property owner ultimately decided not to proceed with the project, leaving the approved but unconstructed crosswalk location obsolete. Given that the original basis for the approval no longer exists, it is appropriate for the city to remove this designation from the code. I would like to move, Council President, I would like to move this to introduction.
Second.
All right. Do you need a roll call on this?
If you wish to open it to the council only, you can. Otherwise, we take a vote.
Let's take a vote.
Okay. Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries.
The hearing will be-
The hearing date for this ordinance will be February 19th at our next council meeting.
That's a Wednesday, by the way.
Ah, good point. That is Wednesday because of the President's Day holiday. All right, our second ordinance for introduction is from Community Programs and Parking Services. Madam Clerk?
ID number 11734, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. This is ID number 11734. This is to amend the current ordinance to allow for resident commuters to be able to park in the tier garage. This is in conjunction with a previous hearing on the Broad Street Garage that is now allowing 42 additional spaces for non-resident commuter parking on the top level. The additional of 32 spaces on the ground floor of the Broad Street Parking Lot for resident only. This will also allow resident commuters to utilize the tier garage, which they have not been able to use previously. Currently, there are, on average, over 50 available spaces on the tier garage and would give us approximately a net increase in resident commuter parking between the two garages. I move to introduce this ordinance for introduction.
Second. All right. Roll call, please. Oh. Oh, yes. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hamlet, do you have a comment?
I just want to make a quick comment, and I just want to say to Director Swicki, I'm glad that this is in here, and I think that this will help solve some of my questions from earlier. And I guess I would ask Councilman Smallwood if we can add some of the lot numbers for the next meeting in the minutes, and also Nicole was kind enough to email me the number of employee permit holders from last year and this year as well. And I think that information would be super helpful for the public to understand.
Okay, great. Good comment. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Last ordinance for introduction is from Capital Projects and Community Services. Madam Clerk?
ID number 11748, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Departments Created, Section 2-14, Department of Community Services.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. As Rosie said, this is ID 11748. This ordinance amends Section 2-14 of the city code to memorialize changes in the organizational structure of the Department of Community Services. Specifically, the ordinance provides that the department shall be divided into three divisions, the Division of Engineering and Public Works, the Construction Division, and the Land Use Division. This ordinance specifies the functions of each division and provides that in absence of a Director of Community Services, the head of Division of Engineering and Public Works shall be the Director of Engineering and Public Works, the head of the Land Use Division shall be the Land Use Manager, and the head of Construction Division shall be the Construction Official. And this was discussed earlier in the meeting by our city administrator. Baldwin, I would like to move this ordinance for introduction.
Second, please.
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. This hearing will also be on Wednesday, February 9th.
19th.
19th, I'm sorry, February 19th, as will the Community Programs and Parking Services ordinance. All right. Now we're on to our resolution section of our meeting. We've got a few from Finance. Councilwoman Toth, would you introduce, Resolution Number 1?
Okay. Thank you, Council President. First resolution, ID number 11740, is to authorize transfer appropriations in the operating budget. This is standard operating practice. The last two months of the calendar year and the first three months of the next year, we take money that we haven't spent from accounts with extra money and use it to fund expenses from accounts where we didn't quite allocate enough funds. So, in this case, I move this, sorry, move this resolution for introduction.
Second.
For adoption.
For adoption. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Do I have any comments from the public? Comments from council?
Good example of that fund allocation.
Yes, exactly. Councilwoman Hamlet?
I guess my question is, Councilwoman Toth, will this cover the crossing guards for the rest of the year? And then were the other two items, were we just, were we just short in those?
I'm going to defer to our business administrator on those.
Through you, Council President. We are moving funds to the crossing guards. This is for other expenses, not for salaries. Salaries were covered, but we needed $230 to cover costs in the operating budget for crossing guards. And then $8,000 each to the planer services in legal and MLU. So it's a total of $16,230 that we're moving from extra funds in the police OE to crossing guards and extra funds in community services salaries over to the MLU and the planner.
So I'm assuming we needed those extra funds to cover. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call. Roll call, okay, you're right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood? Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Finance Number 2, Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you. This is ID 11741, to authorize emergency temporary appropriations for the municipal operating budget. State law requires us to call this an emergency. It is not an emergency. Until we adopt our budget a little later in the spring, we are operating on a temporary budget which is very limited, and a lot of spending has to, in any spending above that limited amount, is called an emergency. So in order to pay our bills, we need to pass this resolution, and I move it for adoption.
Second.
All right, do I have any comments from the public on this resolution? Comments from council? All right, do we need a roll call on this as well?
Yes. Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Finance Number 3, Councilwoman Toth.
Well, thank you. This is ID 11739, authorizing a grant application submission by the Summit Free Public Library for a program next year in connection with the arts on creative aging in place. We are not being asked to spend any money. This is the library, the library is applying for a grant. Under normal circumstances, it wouldn't come before us. The library does not have its own account yet on the grant application portal, and to set one up would take, would take long enough that the time for applying for the grant would have expired. So they are simply using our grant portal to apply for this grant. There's no additional cost to the city. It's a nice thing to do for the library, and I move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
You might know the answer. Thank you, Council President. But what's the difference? We have Millennium, they're on our council agenda later. We have them do some grants for public art. It seems like this would be the same exact thing, correct?
I believe that Millennium may have assisted the library in putting this grant application together, but according to Ms. Bear Shields, the head librarian, it's their application.
Sorry, I guess that's my question. So when we do them for public art, do we go through the same process?
Yeah, the library is a separate organization, so we can apply for grants for that entity.
I guess, so here, the reason why I'm really asking this question is, we've been talking a lot about helping the Housing Authority obtain some grants, and I've been really trying to be actively involved in looking at playground grants. So could we use Millennium in this capacity for the Summit Housing Authority? We don't have to answer it now, but I think that it, you know, maybe we can just think about it or ask Millennium when we, it'd be helpful. I don't know the answer, but.
May I?
Yes.
You may.
Through you, Council President. The reason that the library applies for many grants on their own, this particular grant, they needed to have a DUNES number, and the library does not have their own DUNES number. The city does. It takes several weeks or months to acquire a DUNES number, and they operate as kind of a branch, even though it's a separate entity, but they're in our budget. We budget for their fees, right? So we collect the library fees, we pay them what the state determines that we pay. So we're just kind of like the pass-through so that they can get this grant. When it comes to Summit Housing Authority, I'd have to do a little more research because they are not, they have a separate tax ID number, they're a separate entity. I don't know if we could apply on behalf of them. It might be an option, but I think I just need to do a little more research to make sure there's no, you know, anything tricky about that.
We did talk, we did talk about this before, and I actually asked our city solicitor, Matt Giacobi, that question, and I was told, no, because they're a separate entity, we can't use them to write grants, because that would be, that would have been great, right? We, you know, Summit Housing, hey, get after it, right? Get all the grants that you can get, but I was told, you want to, you want to comment on that, or are we good?
You're good, you got it right.
Okay, great.
The answer's no, sadly. All right, other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Finance Number 4, Councilwoman Toth.
I'm on a roll. This is ID 11750, to establish the opioid funding distribution task force. This is something that we have discussed, or that council has discussed on and off for, for the better part of a year, that the city will be receiving considerable sums from the National Opioid Settlement, and Solicitor Giacobi urged us to set up an opioid, to set up this task force to determine the best use for it, and in fact, it may be required. So let's get the right people in the room to decide how we can spend this money, and I move, move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Through you, Council President.
Councilman Boyer.
So this opioid grant is near and dear. I've been talking to numerous, you know, whether it's the Summit Elks or Sage, you know, trying to get some joint opportunities with the community in terms of this grant spending. And, you know, those suggestions with certain groups, I'll bring to the table with this task force. I definitely think the task force is needed. I know the mayor and I kind of have been doing our own thing and trying to figure out the best way to allocate these funds, and I think this task force is going to be great, especially if it operates as well as the homeless task force, then I think we'll do good things. But we've, we've done a lot of research throughout the year, and I think this is, this is the best result. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I'd like to speak to this because this was something that was recommended and actually is really a requirement in, in order to distribute those funds. So this is sort of the first step, and then the next steps are obviously identifying opportunities for use of the funds and appropriate opportunities. And as Councilman Boyer said, you know, we, we have some ideas already, but obviously we have a decent amount of money, and so this will just allow us to, to follow the procedure so we do this, the distribution properly.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, I would just add, you know, this is, it's so tragic where this money has come from, but I think we do have an opportunity to do some good with it, and I think this is a great idea. I know there's been some amazing ideas on how to help people in our community with these funds. Getting more people in the room and combining those ideas will be even better. We do have people who are at risk. There are ways that we can use these funds really appropriately, and I'm excited to see what this task force can do, because it can really, really help our community. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to resolutions from Capital Projects and Community Services.
We moved the administrative one up to Finance, or the grant writer.
Oh, you're right, the grant writer, okay. So we've got the, this is ID number 11732. This is a Finance Resolution, so Councilwoman Toth.
I get to keep going.
You do and me.
Okay, this resolution is going to approve a one-year contract extension with Millennium, which is our grant writer, for $45,600. Last year, they helped us receive grant, get awarded grants of more than $1.3 million. So that's not a bad return on investment, and we've got, they have submitted applications on our behalf already that we're waiting on for this year, have considerably more than that, and are working on some others. So I move this resolution for adoption. Good source of outside funds.
I second.
Thank you. Comments from the public?
Through you, Council President.
Oh, wait, wait, we got some public comments. Hold on, hold on.
So I'm glad to hear that we have.
Oh, name and address please.
Diego Hoyt, Nargal Court. I'm glad to hear we got about $1.3 million in grants last year. It is indeed a good return investment. What I don't see in the contract that I think could be useful is some notion of what is, what is considered a success, right? Like a tiered compensation for the grant writers. The more money they bring in, the more money they make, I think would be a good way to put it, number one. And number two, if I remember correctly, the 2024 budget has about $130-ish thousand in grants, in grant money coming in, and at the time that the budget was passed last year, we were told we could not be sure of what kind of grant money we would be getting. And as a result of that, we had to make up the shortfall in revenue with the tax increase, the increase in the tax rate. So if we got $1.3 million and we increased the tax rate, and we had record amounts of tax levy last year increases, I'm trying to understand why all of a sudden we're raising fees for everything.
Thank you.
No comment?
It's not a Q and A, Mr. Hoak. It's a comment section. All right, any other comments from the public? Comments from council?
Through you, Council President.
Ah, yes, go please, Mr. Boyer.
I was with, I was with Mr. Hoyt for like two minutes there, and then made a left turn at the end. But, so I, I, I understand that this, along with some other agencies that we do business with, will now be going through committee so that we can do a RFP, right? I think, I think that is a good move. I know that there are other grant writers out there, and, you know, we should see what's out there in the universe. And one thing that Mr. Hoyt did say is that, well, what's the, what's the litmus? What's the scale of what's good? The number of 1.4 million may look good, but compared to what? I know that there's a limited number of grant writers out there through my conversations with the city administrator and, and our engineer, and also I understand that depending on the grant writer, there may take a percentage of the money that you get. So I know there are some concerns, but we still should see, there are other grant writers out there, and we still should see what's out there in the universe. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I would just say, I guess to, to Jamelle's point, I've been working a lot with Millennium and been very pleased with them. I do think that we should really urge them to either present at council so that the public can understand what they're working on, and I would urge my colleagues to have Millennium come to speak with you and your directors so that you can collaboratively work together right now. And in fact, it probably should have been done three months ago, because now we're in February, and if you're in your committees looking for grants, it might be too late. So I would say whatever we do for next year, we should encourage Millennium to just work with not only the directors, but potentially if the council members, you know, the policymakers have ideas on grants, and I think that would be helpful. I would say as far as their fees go, I think I was speaking with Director Schreger and Jamelle the other day, and it can be a slippery slope if we give them a percentage. If they get us $2 million in grants, we could be looking at the, the wrong side of that trade, so. So I think that we've, I would like them to potentially, you know, come to council or something like that at some point.
And through you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Councilwoman Toth.
I was just simply going to say to respond to Councilmember Boyer, I too would have liked to be able to take a bigger view of this thing, but Millennium's last contract expired at the end of December, and they are currently working without a contract, and we just needed to get this sewn up.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Oh. Corina? Ms. Baldwin had her hand up. Oh, she wanted to speak.
Sorry, through you, Council President. I don't want to trump any council people, but I thought it was important to note that one thing is Millennium hasn't raised their fees since 2016. There's that. This is the second time, sorry, we went out in 2024 for our last RFP. We did post an RFP. They were the only one who was responsive to it, and we are allowed by law for this professional service to extend that for one-year options for a total of five years. So that's what we're doing, is exercising that option to extend. We certainly can be looking at going out for an RFP again. We just have to consider it carefully and think about it, because they already have rates established if we extend for each of the next three years. If we go out for a new RFP, those rates could change. We could get other competitive people. I recently just heard of another group, and in all my years in municipal government, Millennium was the only one that I knew of, so I think they are the most popular. They also will come in and speak with council members. They do come in and do a strategic plan, but we have to award a contract to them in order for them to do that. So all of that will start happening, and they certainly would be open to coming to a council meeting, or maybe closed session to talk about the initiatives that council people have.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. She, Ms. Baldwin actually answered one of my questions. My, one of the, the question was, you know, do we have to sign a contract? You know, because it says not to exceed $45,600 per year, so I'm assuming that we're paying them on a per-grant basis, but it's not going to exceed $45,000?
No, it's a, it's a flat fee.
It's a flat fee.
Yeah.
Okay. So my question is, again, it's, when I first got on council, council last year and talking, Councilwoman Hamlet was talking about Millennium, I was like, why is she talking about a generation? I didn't realize what she was talking about till afterwards, and, you know, $1.3 million is great, but, you know, to Councilman Boyer's comment, what are we measuring that against? I mean, what did our surrounding towns, what did they receive in grants? Is there something that we can compare this to to find out if we're, we are really getting the best services for this money? Obviously, getting $1.3 million is a huge win, but are there, are we stuck with one person at Millennium? You know, are there different, they're a large company, right? So there, are there better grant writers at Millennium? I mean, I, I don't know. So I'm just wondering, like, at every company, there's, there's one employee that really outshines the other, right? So is that the case here? Do we get to choose? Can we look at the grant writers at Millennium and say, we would like to work with this person because they got $2.4 million for this company, or this municipality, but ours only got us $1.3 million? I don't know, just thinking from a business perspective.
I mean.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
I will say, I mean, I, I agree with you. I will say, I found it helpful, I've been working with them a lot, and I was curious as well, because there's not that many grant writers. It has been helpful, I believe they're the same grant writer for Union County, so sometimes when I see other municipalities will get a grant from Union County, I definitely ping Millennium, and I'm kind of like, hey, why didn't we go for that, or why did we forget about that? So I do find that helpful. But, you know, I think once we have, we've never, most of you have probably haven't had any conversations with Catherine or the other person, I think once we have those initial meetings, it'll be really helpful.
Other comments? Yeah, I would just say, if you've been watching from your home, we've talked about this over the last several months about creating a more systemic way we go and, and send out RFPs for all our professionals. And I know the admin committee with Councilwoman Commelson is, is working on that to put a schedule together. These guys will be included. I think, you know, given that this one had just come up in '24, maybe they go to, you know, a couple of years from now before they RFP, I'm not sure, but that's what the admin committee will decide. But I do know that when we did RFP just a year ago, they were the only ones who showed up. So we have, we, we have what we have, and we do get grants. But I, but I do certainly think it's a great idea to think about where we stand relative to other municipalities and how they do, et cetera, because grants are a great way to fund our budget, as we've talked about already this, this evening. So, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, now we're going on to Capital Projects and Community Services. Resolution Number 1, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11710, authorizing 2025 City Forester Services not to exceed $65,000, whereas the City of Summit has a need to acquire licensed professional forestry services as a fair and open contract, whereas the anticipated term of this contract is from January 1 through December 31, 2025, whereas the Shade Tree Department LLC has submitted a proposal in response to a public request for qualifications with these costs not to exceed $65,000, dedicating $55,000 for general city services and $10,000 for planning and zoning boards, which are from the escrow accounts. Whereas the cost of these services is not to exceed $65,000, the Assistant DCS Director advises that reducing the required $2 million professional liability insurance to $1 million professional liability insurance, as has been done in prior years. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Do I have any comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects and Community Services, Number 2, Councilwoman Hamlet.
This is, thank you, Council President. This is ID 11723, authorizing the 2025 submission of the 2024 Tree City USA Recertification Application and Accomplishments Report. All of this information is in the packet, but the 2024 application for recertification as a Tree City USA is due for submittal to the New Jersey Forest Service. Since the city submits for recertification annually on the year's prior progress, this is a 2024 recertification submitted in 2025, in concert with the Tree City USA designation. Summit is also submitting the New Jersey Urban and Community Forestry Program Annual Accomplish Report. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? It's great that we are a tree city. It's great. Um, all right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, we're on to, uh, capital projects and community services, number three, Councilwoman Hamlet.
I'm gonna pass this to Councilman Boyer, if that's okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet. Appreciate it. Uh, this is ID, resolution number 11727. The common council, uh, wishes to amend the committee's membership structure to designate, uh, to designate, sorry, the appointment of the council member representative to serve as the chair of the Park Line Steering Committee. I would like to amend this amendment so that the council president will no longer be a designated member of the committee. Instead, the membership will include two council members, one of whom will serve as chair. I would like to move this amendment to the amendment for adoption.
And, um, Mr. Giacobi, that's fine that we just changed that?
That's fine. You're just gonna be passing it as amended, as Councilman Boyer articulated.
Okay. Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all right, do I have comments from the public? Comments from council?
Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Boyer. All right, keep going.
Just so the residents know what this, what this is, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we decided the, the Park Line, um, has been, you know, taken a decade to, to get in place. We really need to get that project going. Uh, no fault of any of our city employees or any member of the Park Line Steering Committee. Uh, we just found that, you know, this really streamlines it to put a council person on it so that the other council members, council president, business administrator holds that council member, um, accountable, which is me, of course. Uh, so I'd like to thank, uh, Engineer Schreger, uh, and the other , uh, committee members, uh, who were on the phone call last week. I think we already have a, we're already moving in the right direction, you know? Um, we're looking forward to getting that DOT approval for that grant, uh, and looking at the next steps to getting this project moving forward. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, capital projects, number four, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11746, authorizing the replacement of the low-flow pumps at Chatham Road Pump Station. The low-flow pumps are critical pumps. They are the primary pumps used in the time of low flow. They operate against a high elevation head, uh, for a distance exceeding 1.5 miles. They are very taxed, uh, and have required a lot of repairs to, uh, over the last decades with a cost of nearly $330,000. Uh, these high costs are directly related to the style of these existing pumps. And the sewer operator was able to obtain quotes from a very reputable vendor under the Bergen County Co-op from Rapid Pump and Meter Services. Uh, the cost for both the equipment and the installation is $199,250. Uh, I would like to move this resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Jamelle.
Second.
Uh, do I have comments from the public? Comments from council?
Through you, Council President.
Yes, please, Mr. Boyer.
I apologize, Councilwoman Hamlet. This is, this, is this the one where the change order? Cause I was-
No.
No, okay. All right. That's what I was looking for. Okay, I'm good.
Any other comments from council? All right, I just would say, um, you know, these pumps are critical. All right? I mean, I think, uh, Director Schreger would, would say, we have to pump stuff uphill before gravity starts to take it down to, um, uh, Elizabeth, where it empty, you know, to our treatment plant. So we gotta get it up the hill first. You don't want it not working. So we've got to invest in pumps. And, and this is part of our sewer authority, which is an authority. Uh, so different little structure, um, as part of our city government. So, um, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, last, capital projects, resolution number five, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. And Councilman Boyer, that one's, I think, is for the next meeting, the one you're thinking of. So, uh, yes, this is resolution ID 11769. Uh, as discussed in closed session, this resolution would, uh, place Irene Lowshirt as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, Irene was on the rent committee and, uh, I think she'll be a great asset. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, we're moving along to, uh, community programs and parking services, uh, resolution, uh, number one, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID number 11768. This resolution is to create a committee to address the concerns raised by the na- the Tatlock neighborhood. Based on the five Tatlock community meetings held last year, along with professional studies on lighting, traffic, and environmental impact, as well as the listening session led by the mayor and council president, it has become clear that several issues in the Tatlock neighborhood need to be addressed beyond just field lights. I want to thank Council President McTiernan, Councilwoman Hamlet, and Councilwoman Palowski for suggesting this task force to tackle these concerns, including, but not limited to, traffic, parking, parking sidewalks, and general lighting, not to be confused with field lighting. The task force will be composed of the following members: three common council representatives from Ward One, the council president, and up to four residents of the Tatlock neighborhood. I would highly recommend to this task force to begin by reviewing all of the minutes, questions, and answers from the five community meetings held at last, held last year, which highlight a lot of the main concerns from the neighbors. I'd like to move this resolution for adoption.
Second. Comments from the public?
Chosel and Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. Establishing a committee to examine the concerns raised by residents of the Tatlock neighborhood is a great idea and can be beneficial for the neighborhood, if implemented in good faith within certain parameters. I believe the 500-yard radius around Investors Bank Field is too broad and would encompass residents not impacted by the items the committee is seeking to improve. I think it is interesting to point out that in the initial proposed lighting plan for Tatlock, it originally called for three separate meetings about the studies. For those, the DCP specified that the Tatlock stakeholders to be notified were those within 200 feet of the field. This 500-yard radius includes those located almost eight times that distance from the field, which are not those residents with daily firsthand experience of the issues this committee is looking to address. If you are honestly trying to solve the problems noted in the resolution, then the input and solutions need to come from those most impacted. Anything else feels disingenuous. Additionally, I believe that for this group to be productive, the four pointed residents must be people that the other neighborhood residents feel comfortable approaching and voicing concerns to. These four residents will give input and make decisions about items that will have a large impact on the daily lives of those most affected by the field and its use. They truly must be ambassadors of the Tatlock neighborhood, who have the best intentions for the residents living around the field, coming up with collaborative solutions that will not only preserve, but enhance the neighborhood's quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council? Councilwoman Commelson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I agree with Ms. Modesto that we should give preference to people who live near the impacted areas, um, and have voiced concerns because those are the people that are most interested in solving the problem.
Other comments? Uh, Councilman Boyer?
Through you, Council President. I'm laughing because the mayor told me to raise my hand. Um, yeah, so here, here's my limited experience with, uh, really difficult situations. I mean, the Park Line was a difficult situation. We had, you know, we, we had neighbors in the Park Line all come out. Some were, you know, some were yelling and, you know, I sat by and I'm like, listen, people are passionate about where they live at, right? Like, hey, you know, like, say, say, say what you feel. But at the end of the day, um, we got residents on there that, you know, really didn't want it there, but they said, you know what? This is gonna happen, but I want it to be the best possible if it's gonna abut my, my house. So I tell the story to say that, um, when picking members for this, uh, this task force, I mean, even council members, I think, we, people have to have an open mind, right? If, if you go into it saying, either way, this is gonna happen, or this is not gonna happen, then you're not, you're not, you don't have an open mind, right? So I, I think if, if you, if you're close-minded about this process, um, you know, you could really be doing a disservice to the task force to really try to find out what is needed, right? What is needed in this area? How can we make this, how can we make this happen? Or this is impossible not to happen, whatever the findings are. But I, I would say, you know what? Keep an, keep an open mind about it. So.
Thank you. Other, uh, comments? Go ahead, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yeah, I would just say, I agree with Jamelle. You know, when I was initially mentioning this, or Mike, maybe you did, I can't remember, but, you know, a lot of times as a council member, we're in certain committees. So I'm in capital projects. Jamelle's in safety. A lot of these issues are cross, sort of contaminated with different committees. Um, shouldn't say cross-contaminated, they're, they're cross-referenced in different committees. Um, so sometimes as a council person, it's difficult to say, you know what? We've identified 14 problems or five problems. We all can kind of agree. We've come to consensus. But then Kevin, you take it back to your committee and I'll take half of it back to safety. I mean, Rosie, you see it all the time. A DAR starts in one committee and then it ends in another one and it gets. So I think the goal of this is to truly try to help, um, residents and some of the residents, and I think the reason why the 500 radius is, is high, or not 200, um, this also talks about the, um, the river road, the cut-throughs. And right now, we're doing, we have a grant for a million dollars for Canoe Brook Parkway. And those residents should also be probably, if they're within 500 feet, I think they should be included. I don't know if they're even involved with, or in, close with 500 feet. Um, but I, I think I'm fine with the 500-feet radius. Um, but I think, you know, if it doesn't work, we can scrap it. I think it's just an opportunity to sort of take all of the ideas that we had collected and sort of work through them. I don't think it's gonna create an extra burden for staff or, or anything like that.
Other comments? Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. Just a clarification, it's not 500 feet, Councilwoman Hamlet, it's 500 yards. That's 1,500 feet. So that's the disparity that got pointed out.
Thank you. That's what I meant, sorry.
Councilman, uh, Smallwood.
Uh, thank you, Council President. You know, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't want this to be confused with, this is about the Tatlock lights, right? This committee was suggested based on feedback regarding Tatlock lights, that there are other issues that need to be dealt with, whether lights are installed or not. And it, it, it includes more than just the people who live across the street. You know, it's, uh, it's that area itself because there is two fields there. There's a school there. Um, and just some of the issues that came up during those meetings last year, whether Tatlock lights happen or not, these issues need to be dealt with. And I believe that's the purpose of this task force, is to improve those conditions, whether lights happen or not.
Comments? Uh, other comments? Yeah, I, I would just, uh, close by saying, you know, I, when, um, Councilwoman Hamlet mentioned this, uh, last meeting or two meetings ago? I can't remember. Um, I was like, wow, great idea. Um, because, you know, as Councilman, um, Smallwood mentioned, it became abundantly clear as we sat there and talked to residents that there, there were a lot of issues that were not changing regardless of whether lights go in there or not. They had issues, particularly around large events that would happen there on occasion that happened there now, whether it's a Saturday football game, uh, or graduation, or, you know, uh, or the Friday night light game that happens, uh, in the fall. Um, and you know what struck me talking and listening to residents, uh, what I felt was kind of, not sad, I guess, I, not unexpected, but there were some residents who said, we're here and this entire thing is a sham. This is performance theater. We're having these meetings. You guys have already made up your minds. You, you know, this is just a waste of everyone's time. And that made me, you know, I, I get it. I mean, there's, trust in government is, is low. It is. Um, and, uh, but I, when Councilwoman Hamlet suggested this, you know, the, the fact is, we do listen. We do. And, and it, this is something, you know, like, those people, I get it, you know, people say, oh, they live next to a field. That's great. But that field is an asset to the entire community and the city, it's pretty clear to me, and, uh, when thinking about this, we could do a much, much better job managing the events that take place there, regardless of, this has nothing to do with lights or not. Um, whether lights get put in, we have to manage the events anyways. If lights don't get in, we have to manage the events that are going on already. And we do a horrible job at it. And this task force, I think, is super important to address those issues, cause we do listen. And, uh, I get it, you know, other neighborhoods have some issues too. Um, but these are very specific to a, the town using this as a, as an asset where we all enjoy it. We love going to sporting events. Our kids, um, develop there. They grow. They learn teamwork, et cetera. It's a great asset. But the, the, we have to, um, we have to manage these city and Board of Ed events, not to the detriment of the people who happen to live there. They all bought in that they live next to a park. They get it that events are happening. But it doesn't mean that, you know, they should not be able to park in their driveway when these things happen, or they're dangerous. And we have to do a much, much better job. And I think this, um, this task force should is, um, should be able to come up with some good solutions that we can make these events much more manageable, um, for those people, cause they deserve it. They really do. Um, I don't have that strong of an opinion about the, the distance things. Um, all I can say is, the people I talked to, there were a lot of people who lived more than 200 feet from, uh, Tatlock who were at these meetings and seemed passionate about it. Um, I, I'd hate to preclude good ideas. Maybe there's some way we can work that out, um, when we're vetting people to make sure. We have definitely people who live close by, but, uh, if we have a few, maybe we can make sure that if someone feels really strongly and seems to have good ideas, we can include them. Cause I, I'd, I'd hate to just have an arbitrary cutoff and someone who really could bring something to the table is excluded. Um, but that's, but that can be worked on, I guess. Um, but yeah, I, so I applaud you for coming up with this. Um, I think it's a great idea. Um, and I'm fully supportive. So, all right. Is, can we vote on this? Councilman Jamelle?
Count, Council President, I just want to say, thank you for explaining. And thank you, Councilman Smallwood, for explaining, because I think there's some residents out there that, you know, um, felt like me initially when reading this, that this was really, you know, focused on the lights, but it's focused on all the concerns that we, we heard during the town hall. So that, thank you for explaining. I think that was good. Um, I appreciate it. Yep.
Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet.
And just, just to say, you know, Director Schreger, we have how many, how many people, uh, residents feedback from the Canoe Brook Parkway stuff? I don't, again, I don't know where the, the boundaries lie, but we have more data from other residents and I, I think it'll be helpful to keep that area.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, uh, we're three hours in and we're at the consent agenda. All right. Um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, city staff, thank you for being here. Uh, have a good night traveling home and stay safe. Okay?
Thanks, man. Thanks, David.
All right, at this time, uh, we're gonna open up our, uh, meeting to public comments. If anyone in the public would like to make a comment, uh, please come up, state your name and your address, and please hold it to three minutes.
Council President and members of council and mayor, I'll be last in three minutes. Um, good evening. I'm Diego Hoich and I'm Argal Court. Every manager knows the importance of preserving liquidity in times of upheaval. The actions taking place in Washington are significant and rapid, and they will impact all of us. For example, most economies expected that the steep tariffs announced last Saturday on our three most important trading partners could tank our economy- on our three most important trading partners could tank our economy and with it, summit's tax base. Fortunately, most of these tariffs were suspended for a month, but their threatened implementation still looms. Also, mass deportation risks removing individuals whose construction jobs allow summit residents to be able to improve the value of their homes. In their absence, the rate of growth of ratables will likely slow down. Finally, the president is about to unveil his vision for the Department of Education. What has leaked so far presents many challenges for our excellent schools. How will special needs students receive funding? Will we have to spend taxpayer funds to grow the endowments of private schools? If federal programs like reduced and free lunch are eliminated, will we allow kids in our community to go hungry? There is no point in debating the present and constant federal policy changes in this forum, but we should fully understand their impact. Until such time as we have clarity of the long-term changes, the only fiscally responsible course of action is to delay spending as much as possible. As an attachment, I enter into the record an email I wrote to you, Council President, last November, suggesting common sense measures to avoid unnecessary spending and answered. Some of them address the capital budget. For example, this council should agree to a desired level of spending with the advice of our well-respected city administrator and CFO. Projects should only be put on the budget after the spending level is set, and they should be grouped into three budgets: routine maintenance, like repairing, repaving roads; necessary major upgrades, like the 45-year-old tiered garage we just heard about today; and nice-to-have projects that improve our community but can wait until next year. Given the extreme uncertainty we're now operating under, prudence dictates that we skip nice-to-haves until we have clarity. In this uncertain year, this council should target a constant tax rate. We should also continue to pay down our debt to its levels at the time the firehouse was bonded, adjusted for inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a statement?
Yes, I do.
Yep, awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
I know it's late, so I'll be quick. Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. City Administrator Baldwin had an opening statement about the Hometown Hero banners. I know there was some discussion last year about extending that time to maybe Veterans' Day, right? Isn't Veterans' Day later on? I know Springfield, Madison, Chatham does it. I know there was some concern about the wear and tear on the banners, but if you just keep that in the forefront of your mind when you talk about that moving forward. I know I, in my adventure last year knocking on doors, I did get a bunch of veterans who expressed a concern about them coming down too early, especially for Veterans' Day, so just wanted to put that out in the front. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments from the public? Okay, we're going to close public comments at this time. We're now on to council members' comments and new business. Who would like to start?
I will just bore us all with one more thing about money, because at the last council meeting, we authorized the issuance of non-emergency, emergency bonds to pay back the last tranche of our COVID lost parking revenues, in the amount of $170,000, and that has gone out and been issued. Typically, a bond issuance that small doesn't get much interest from the market, and little interest means high rates. But we, we, we got a fair amount of interest. We ended up, we're going to be paying interest rates of just a shade over 4% without having to do a premium on top of that, and I think that just speaks really well of how our business administrator, CFO, has managed our finances, that we got a lot of interest in such a small bond offering. And so hopefully, when we go out again later this year, we'll do at least as well.
Thank you. Other comments? No, I know you got one.
Yeah, so...
Councilman Boyer.
First, I would like to talk about the Notor Protect program. It was, it was an amazing program. The, the parents there were really involved. I mean, there is, the predators have moved from the playground into our homes. Now, that, that was the main point that really, really hit home. And they had these videos of, I mean, it, it makes me sick to my stomach, but they had these, they showed these videos of these random guys in your house, in your, in your, your daughter's closet, it's like four guys in the room, and, you know, she's sitting there, she's typing on the computer, because these are all of the different people that your kids could be interacting with online, and you don't even know, as you call her down for dinner. We live in a very, this digital environment is a very scary environment, and I'm looking forward for these special agents to come back and give representation to our students in the school, because it was, it's very eye-opening, and some of them may even be involved in, and not even knowingly, maybe even involved in these, these entanglements where, you know, they're being threatened online because they shared a picture or something like that, you know? So, you know, I, I really, I, I really would like to see more parent participation, you know, when it comes to these things. I think that this is, this is very, very eye-opening, and, you know, parents go on to Notor Protect online, Homeland Security, check out their, their PDFs, check out their presentations. You can see the apps that you should be concerned about, steps to talk to your children, what to look for. It's very, it's very eye-opening, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief regarding the Hometown Heroes. I just wanted to make one comment. When we say applications are open, that means they're going to close at a certain point. I forget what that date is, but I served on the Hometown Hero Committee last year, and the amount of people who wanted to come in late, it's kind of a hard stop, and there's a reason. Michael Arley works really hard, and I don't want to have to turn anybody down, so we'll publish the deadline date again, but it's really important you get those in. Jamel, I remember you were one of the ones last year that wanted to submit somebody, and we missed the deadline, so.
Thank you for putting me on blast.
So just remember, just get it in in the next couple weeks. I've been thinking a lot about the Veterans' Day, keeping, obviously, there's nobody up here that's, you know, would be more excited to keep them up till Veterans' Day. There is a lot of wear and tear on the, the banners, and, but what we can look into is maybe some grant funding to keep them through Veterans' Day, or maybe a fundraiser. I've been speaking with Michael Arley a lot about it. The other thing I wanted to mention, I think that was, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention, which I should have started off with, I think it's important we take a moment, if I, if I may, maybe a moment of silence for all the folks who died in the past week in the, in the airline crashes. My hearts go out to all of those. My, sadly enough, in the one in DC, it's very close to home for me. My daughter's on a skating team at Cody Arena, so she's often at those skating competitions, and one of the girls who skates there, not at Cody, but one of the girls who was on the airplane, had trained at Cody Arena this December, and her whole family was decimated, so. Maybe take a moment of silence. That's all I have.
Thank you. Other comments from council? All right, just, I just, quick wrap-up, and it, one thing I just wanted to say, as Mr. Hoyt mentioned, there's a lot of stuff in the news. There is. And it seems to change, like, every half hour, so it's, it's very volatile. And some things may happen, some things may not. I would, though, I have seen emails fly around, and people get all worried, and that we're going to have to raise taxes because city services are going to get cut because we're not going to have federal money, and this, that, and the other thing. I would just ask people to think before they decide to send out things that are unsubstantiated, or that they don't know, or they're speculating, because, you know, we have a mental health crisis in our country. People are anxious, they're nervous, they, you know, we, depression is through the roof. You know, to stoke fear and to play with people's emotions, to score a point here or there, these are real people. And when, I would just say, like, just think about that. If there's a real issue, that something may be affected, we'll have that conversation. But throwing stuff out on social media, and then we get all these emails that people are really scared, these, these are people. And we shouldn't be playing with their emotions and scaring people to score a point here or there. My side gets a point, your side gets a point, whatever it is. That's ridiculous. And so I, I would just ask people to care and think before they do these things, and we'd be in a better world, because strap in, there's going to be a lot of news, and we'll have enough to worry about that's real, that, rather than stuff that's speculative. So, so. But then they went away, so I, I get it. I get it, I get it. But let's, let's, I'm not saying that you, you were, that was not true, but I'm just saying there are other things that I have seen that are pure speculation, and that's, that's my, that's what my comments are about, so, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I love that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.